Okay, well, good afternoon, everyone. We're glad to see so many familiar faces, and we're going to go ahead and get started. Before we call the meeting to order, I have something to read here, executive order. On March 13, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Subsequently, on March 16, 2020, pursuant to the authority granted in the declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, in order to permit telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID virus, COVID-19 virus, by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continued governmental operations and preserving transparency in the decision-making process. Pursuant to this authority, Tarrant County College District gave notice to of its intent to conduct today's work session meeting as a telephonic and video conference open meeting. Five trustees will participate in person for this meeting. Myself, Teresa Ayala, Mr. Kenneth Barr, Mr. William Greenhill, Mr. Leonard Hornsby, and Ms. Jeannie DeKine. Dr. Gwendolyn Morrison and Ms. Shannon Wood will participate via video conference or telephonically. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, the work session meeting to order. Do we have any public comments, Mr. Gates? We do, correct? Yes, okay. Daniel J. Bennett?
Do you want to tell me when to go, or just I just go?
No, whenever you're ready, someone will be timing that for you, so go ahead. Thank you.
Well, President Ayala and trustees, my name is Daniel Bennett. I have been before you before. We have a lot of new faces. Those may not remember me. I came before you back in 2019. I was concerned about the appraisal district board of directors election. Well, that night I was here, I was encouraging you to vote for Ms. Catherine Wildman. And I have something I'd like to read. You do have a copy, understand Ms. Fisher was kind enough to put it in your packet. There's two typos. In November 19, I spoke before this board, asking you to support Catherine Wildman for the appraisal district board of directors. I wanted to come back and report my observations. That's why I'm here today. As then, my support emanated from discussions with individuals who had experience working with Ms. Wildman through the years, and I also spoke to her over the phone. Ms. Wildman has been placed in the two leadership roles since her tenure started on TAD Board, January 1, 2020. Her first leadership role was as Chair of a subcommittee to review the Board of Directors handbook. This committee did not meet for four months after being assigned. It did meet for one meeting after four months, and then the task remains uncompleted. No resolutions or recommendations were brought forward, not even a statement affirmation that no steps, actions, or recommendations were necessary after the committee's one and only meeting. Now, I don't know if all you know there was a recall at the appraisal board. The only appraisal district in the state that had a recall, and this wasn't a recall because someone had done something wrong, wasn't prepared for the meetings, or didn't show up. These were requested recalls, which is highly unusual. During the recall, two board members who requested to be recalled, Ms. Wildman resisted the requests of the remaining board members and the majority of taxing entities to call for a special meeting so an interim chair could be chosen. This is also important because April 30, 2020, Senator Jane Nelson had sent a letter to the Board of Directors requesting an inspection of the software to see if it was partly responsible for the increased protests in Tarrant County. Now, with my comments, you have Nelson's letter and a letter from one of the taxing entities requesting a meeting. The district ignored requests for a meeting to choose the interim chair to address Senator Nelson's office letter, as did Ms. Wildman as her role Secretary of the TAD Board. She was Secretary at this time, she too ignored the request. To this date, Senator Nelson's letter remains unanswered. So it's gone on 14 months, and the board has not responded to a state senator, the leading state senator in the state with the highest tenure. These two instances has proven to me that she is not a good fit for this board. I withdraw my support. I'm asking this board to, not top, to, to review her performance. My hope is you too will withdraw your support. Now, at your convenience, I have additional information. If I'll be happy to meet with anybody informally, if you have questions for me after this meeting, which I got paid parking, or some other time. So my phone number's here, my address is available, and I appreciate your time and listening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. No further comments, public comment, Mr. Gates? No? Okay, thank you. So just want to thank everyone for all the preparation that went into these work sessions. I know that, you know, one of our greatest assets and strengths for this college is the people that work here, and we know that a lot of effort goes into this preparation. So we just want to thank everyone. There's a lot of people doing things behind the scenes, so thank you for that. Let's see, we'll go ahead in item number three, the review of board business items. We have some upcoming appointments for the TCC Foundation Board appointment, an Audit and Finance Committee appointment, and there are some, there's some details, descriptions available for you all to read in your folders that have been sent to everyone. So we'll take care of those appointments at the next meeting, next week. And so if you want to have an opportunity to review all of that, and if you have any questions, let us know, or if you have an interest in serving, let us know that as well. Any questions? Okay. All right, we'll go over to item number C, May 12, 2021, Special Meeting of the Board of Trustees Draft. Does anyone have any comment or questions on that? Okay. Item D, May 13, Work Session Meeting Minutes Draft. Any questions, comments? It's a quiet group today. All right, and let's see. What did he say? Okay, let's see. Item E, May 2021, Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, we'll go to the chancellor's overview.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. Good afternoon, everyone. We have a very full agenda today. I want to highlight a number of items of significance in, as it relates to academic programming, we have contracts for both the flight training program as well as the pilot program. These are programs in which we contract out the direct delivery of instruction. We have a couple of purchases in the imaging field, both for red tech, radiation technology, as well as nuclear medicine programs, new imaging equipment there. As it relates to the learning and support for students, we have a renewal for the student transportation, again, that we do pay for the bus fare for all of our students. We have two items dealing with support for nursing students in the preparation, from their curriculum preparation of the program, as well as test taking. And then the last one deals with a child care assistance program, which is for our student parents, our students who are parents as well. In the capital area, a number of programs, one dealing with some supplemental insurance on the Northwest Campus Project. We'll also be looking at financial advisory services for the future bond sales. There's contract amendment on wayfinding, on how we navigate our campuses, as well as a large construction contract for the first two buildings of the Northwest Campus, and parking lot improvements at Trinity River and Truck Campuses. There's some pre-construction agreement for the Southeast Campus, as well as additional design services for the Southeast Campus. And then lastly, under that heading is an opportunity and agreement to engage asset management support, meaning having a better understanding of our assets and keeping track of those to give us best informed information for our future decision-making. Some other items that we have, one is dealing with the COVID authority that you have granted me over the last year. We're asking for that to be extended to October 1. We've had a couple items in recent months, and they have been ratified, so there is a continuation. Also, we will be receiving shortly the next allocation of government funds of some $87 million, which likely will have a little less restriction on them and more opportunity for us to expend and to offset some of our costs in support of our students as well. And we, of course, would come back and ratify those. We have a couple, we have an agreement related to financial auditing services, to that RFP, to solicit our auditing services, and then a couple in the communications area related to telephone and our Cisco Communications efforts. With the onset of our programs up at Alliance for Economic Development Services for Learning and Development that Shannon Bryant is heading up, she is in need certainly of practitioners to do training. That is something that we need a qualified pool for, and we're asking for approval of that. And then finally, we have a number of elevators throughout the college that need maintenance and repair, so it's a contract there as well. So you can see quite a number of items varied in nature, and look forward to you considering those. Thank you, Ms. Ayala.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor.
Ms. Ayala.
Yes, ma'am. How are you, Dr. Morrison?
I'm doing great, thank you. I would like to have a few minutes to make a statement, and I would also like to ask that on future agendas, even the governance agendas, that there be a designated place where if trustees would have a statement, they might be, feel free to do that. So if I might have a few minutes to address the board. Good afternoon to fellow trustees, staff, and our public. Three G A P, you hear it all the time, three goals, eight principles. Historically, at this time of the calendar year, I and others have turned our attention to the anniversary of the creation of a community college district in Tarrant County with taxing authority that was created for the purpose of providing affordable, quality education acceptable to the people of Tarrant County. Over the past 56 years, I am of the opinion that we have done that admirably. And from 1976 to a few years ago, I participated with the group at an event called Dr. May's Birthday Party, named in honor of Dr. May Owen, a pioneer career woman in North Texas, Orion, Texas, a charter member of this board, and it included many of the people who participated in the original effort to create the college district. And today I make this statement as a reminder and a request that we each here and in any way associated with TCC celebrate our own opportunity and responsibility to further that vision that governed our creation. We have a great roadmap, three G A principles, one college that serves a community and is dedicated to student success. Sounds so very simple. Let's not let any opportunity to bring those goals to fruition escape us. And so that is why we're here, and it is my hope that everyone, whatever the relationship with Tarrant County College, take these to heart and work towards their embodiment, and the embodiment of our eight principles each and every day, in every contact, in every engagement, whether you're full-time, contract, part-time, consultant, whatever your relationship. When you're here with us, I hope that you will be here all the way toward three goals and eight principles. After all, we are indeed better together. Thank you, and I look forward to working through this voluminous agenda with you. We have a lot of things to accomplish as we work toward our goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. We appreciate those words of wisdom, and, you know, TCC has been a very large part of this community, as well as you and so many others, so thank you for that. Okay, we will go on to item number five, which is the review of proposed consent agenda items for board meeting on June 17. The first one is, A, consideration and approval of resolution granting authority to the chancellor until October 1 to establish rules and procedures he deems necessary and appropriate to combat the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Ms. Carol Bracken?
Good afternoon, trustees. We're back again to discuss the authority, the emergency authority that you have given to the chancellor over the past 15 months relating to emergency actions to be taken with regard to COVID and related measures at points in time where we don't quite have time to get this in front of the board. The request is that you extend this authority until October 1. As we've done in the past, we will report to you monthly as to any time the authority is used, as well as any time it's not used. If there are any questions about this, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions, comments for Ms. Bracken? Okay, thank you. Okay, item B, consideration and approval of contract renewal with Veracity Aviation LLC for professional helicopter flight training for professional pilot program for two years in the amount of $500,000. Dr. Serena Blankenbaker. Hi, how are you? Good to see you, Dr. Blankenbaker.
Good afternoon, President Ayala, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Giovanni. This is approval for the renewal of a continuing agreement with Veracity Aviation, and Veracity Aviation provides flight training for students in the helicopter track of the professional pilot program that we offer here. We offer an Associate of Applied Science, also a Level One Certificate of Completion in Commercial Pilot, and an Enhanced Certificate of Completion as a Flight Instructor. TCC is certified to operate ground school courses, which are the classroom lecture courses only, and we contract with a third-party vendor to provide flight instruction. And Veracity Aviation was selected through our vendor competitive process two years ago, and this is a continuation and a renewal of that agreement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you, thank you. Okay, five C, consideration and approval of engagement with McGiff, Seibels, and Williams, Inc. as agent for Owners Protective Professional Indemnity, OPI, supplemental insurance for the Northwest Campus redevelopment project for five years, estimated amount of $232,500.
Yes, so it's best practice on a project the scale of what we are doing up at the Northwest Campus for us to have additional insurance beyond what the design firms carry for purposes of protecting us against design errors that cause significant challenges post-construction. And so this is a five-year program. It's appropriate to start that clock now because we're starting the actual construction work on the campus. We will pay it in full immediately, but it will cover the entire five-year term. We will bring back a similar item to you when we get closer to construction on the Southeast Campus as well. What I will tell you is that when we negotiated the contract with SCANSCA, there was an anticipation of a need to have this coverage. However, we determined that it was more cost-effective and also left us in a better position to acquire it ourselves. And so we will not, it would have been a pass-through through SCANSCA, but we had it as an ad alternate in that contract, so we won't pay them the fee. We will pay the fee directly for the insurance coverage ourselves. And after extensive conversation with our outside counsel on programs like this, we believe that this is the most appropriate structure for this.
Is it Ayala?
Yes.
Could you talk a minute about what the coverage actually is here?
Yes, so the design firm actually carries $5 million of coverage that actually spans their book of work at any given time. And so what this is, is supplemental insurance for an additional $15 million of coverage. There's no specific rule of thumb about what the appropriate level of coverage is. However, we spent time looking at the value of any individual building and things like that, and making that decision and sort of just weighing cost and benefit by arriving at this level as our recommended coverage.
This is liability insurance to?
It would deal with if during construction, there was a design flaw that resulted in faulty construction that required us to redo any of the work that had happened. And so examples that you've probably read about in the Metroplex and the news is you've heard catastrophic things around athletic facilities and things like that that were based on design errors. This allows us to deal with, you know, all of the parties that may be involved and how that occurred and have coverage for it.
So the beneficiary of the coverage would be?
The college.
The college.
Yes.
Do we have, you said, outside counsel, is that legal counsel? Do we have business counsel in regard to insurance coverage, or is that just something that is just part of the process that we have that is internally done and recommendations from the companies and so forth?
So we do have a staff member who's responsible for engaging with our broker every year regarding insurance coverage, and we bring that to you, I believe, every August or September for approval for the year. That is the broker that we are using in this instance, so we had advice from them. But in this instance, we do have outside counsel to review our contracts with construction firms. And so they've looked at not only our contracts that we're engaging with these firms, but also helped us sort through this issue. In addition, Jacobs had some risk management experts that they brought to the conversation as well as we evaluated the choices.
Okay, thank you.
Was the recommendation to engage in a five-year policy, or is there any advantage to doing this in a shorter term?
So five years is what's typical or appropriate because of the duration of the program. So it sort of aligns with when construction would occur and when those design flaws would become evident and require coverage.
Ms. Ellenese, does this go to flow down to any subcontractors as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? We'll go on to, let's see, five D, which is consideration and approval of contract with Weaver and Tidwell LLP for external financial auditing services for an initial term of two years with a total cost of $290,000. Ms. Ellenese.
Yes, so you may recall that we talked earlier this year about the duration of our relationship with our auditor, and we felt like it would be appropriate to do an RFQ and determine what was available in the market and evaluate the qualifications of the various firms. We went through that process, had a number of responders and a committee to evaluate their qualifications, and are comfortable recommending that Weaver and Tidwell continue as our auditor. However, I will note that the proposed contract will include a contractual obligation for them to rotate their lead auditor at least every five years. That's consistent with GFOA best practice. That includes this year. So James Fitz, who you may be familiar with, actually will rotate off, and we'll have a new lead auditor this year, which is appropriate. The other thing I'll mention is that this was an opportunity for us to consider MWBE partnerships in this professional role, and they do bring a partner to the table for that purpose.
Questions, comments? Ms. Ellenese, is there also a standard for how often you should send out RFQ for auditors? You mentioned something about five years, but I just know if there was a standard around that as well.
I don't know that there's necessarily a standard, but what we're proposing, and I think what's fairly typical, is a two-year agreement with three one-year options to renew. In this action, you would only be approving the initial two years because that's what the fee is identified for. In the event that we exercise those three renewals, we would bring a fee structure back to the board for approval at that point. But that's probably about a good time that I would suggest that we do it every five years or so.
Great. Thank you. Any other further questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Barr?
I certainly have no problem with Weaver and Tidwell and continue with them. On the other hand, I do have a problem with information being provided to the board. I've shared this with the chancellor. I think we need a little more information about the evaluation process. We do have the MWBE participation, but we don't know what the factors were that were considered and how they were ranked, what was considered most important. Just how was this decision made? And I think that's information on this contract, but other contracts ought to be shared with the board to enable us to appreciate the level of, I guess, integrity of the process.
So I don't have the attachments in front of me. I'll have to look them. But I believe what we have included is the responders in the ranked order that if it's not attached, we'll make sure that it gets distributed and is. And in addition, at the bottom, it includes the weighting for the evaluation factors, or it should on that one. That's what we've been trying to include. So if that is absent, we will get that corrected.
There's no weighting shown here. The factors, each firm is evaluated and scored based on the following criteria, but it doesn't give us anything about the weighting of it.
Okay.
Or the points that were scored against the various people, firms that responded to our RFP or whatever it was.
Well, we'll take a look at that.
I'm just thinking, and it's not unique to this contract, and it really doesn't have anything to do with the selection of Weaver and Tidwell as much as giving the board, I guess I'd say, a comfort level with the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Barr. In addition to that, Ms. Ellenese, there's a questionnaire response. If you could kind of put a description of what that is, is it a standard questionnaire that needs to go out, you know, just a description of what that was under the criteria? That would be helpful.
So that relates to checking their references as well, that we send out a questionnaire to their references and are able to receive that back.
Okay.
But we'll take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there are no further questions. We'll go on to item E. You may want to pull up a chair. You're going to be there a while, aren't you, Susan?
I am.
Consideration and approval of contract with PFM Financial Advisors LLC and DeHedina Galvan Lawrence for financial advisory services for two years with options to renew three additional years for costs up to $500,000 in conjunction with future bond sales.
Yes, so this was also recommended to you a while ago that after the last bond sale that we thought the timing was appropriate for us to seek a financial advisor as well. PFM was the firm that assisted us through that last bond sale, and that is who is recommended for approval. Again, this was also an opportunity for MWBE participation in a professional agreement, and they came back with being open to a joint venture with the firm that's listed here, TGL. And they do not receive a fee per se until we actually do the next bond sales. They provide a variety of services to us leading up to that bond sale and preparing for what our financial analysis is leading to that, but they actually collect their fee based on the schedule that's identified here. PFM actually was very cost-effective in that as well, and we're pleased with the results that we had with the last bond sale. Happening, is there any questions? And I assume the similar comments, and we'll take a look.
I echo with Trustee Barr in that regard. I think we need a whole lot of information in regard to the ratification of this agreement or adoption thereof.
In this instance, I'll add one other thing. This is different than the auditor contract in that we are recommending actually the two years with the three-year options to renew all at one time, and the cost estimate is based on assuming that we issue the remaining tranches of debt over the next five-year period. And so that gives us the ability, if we've got any challenges within that two years, but we think that that relationship is appropriate for that length of time based on the next two sales that we would anticipate.
Would those extensions come back to the board?
The way we've got it recommended here, they would be administrative in nature, that we would, staff would be able to execute those. We would have the authority to do so with this approval. You'll note that we worded it differently here than we did on the auditor one. The auditor one, we made it very clear that it was the two years that was being approved, and the discussion included information about the subsequent renewal options.
Well, I would just, the board ought to be made aware if there is an extension, exercise or option or renewal extension, the board ought to be made aware of that. It would seem much too many.
Might it be possible to have information about both of the entities? If it's here, I overlooked it in terms of their background and a little bit about their bio for each of those entities. And if it's here, you can refer me to it, and I'll be happy to read it. Thank you.
We'd be happy to add it for next week's package.
And just for clarity for myself, are you at, were you saying we'll pay the two years and the three years additional upfront?
No, in this instance, they only collect their fee when we actually do a debt sale. So at the settle-up of the debt sale, they receive their fee. What we're asking you all to approve is the term of the contract, which is two years plus three administrative renewals options. So it would not come back to the board for those renewals. In this instance, if we were having a challenge with our financial advisor or we were choosing to make a change rather than exercise one of those renewals, we would certainly be back in front of the board having that conversation.
When you do provide information that speaks to process, for my own edification, could you include details on the process by which joint ventures are agreed upon? I see that two of the suppliers first, or perhaps concurrently, applied for this RFP as their own suppliers, and then there are subsequent RFP responses that include them as joint ventures. So just so I can better understand how that process works.
Yeah, and this one actually is a little bit unique because what we were open to in terms of proposals was either standalone proposals from any of those firms, or if they had a specific joint venture partner in mind, that if that MWBE scoring, you know, had them rise to the top, who would that be? Or were they equally open to being partnered with one of the other MWBE proposers after the fact? And so this one's a little bit unique. It's not normally like that. We did it fairly open-ended to allow all the proposers a fair shake in working to be either the prime or a partner, and to respect some of those relationships that exist among the firms. So that's why you see proposals from all five of them. However, on the PFM proposal, they have an existing relationship with this partner, and so that's who they suggested that they would partner with in the event that that was a deciding factor. And what they do essentially is they split the fee, and I believe it's 65%, 35%. And when we meet with them, they will divide up the work that's necessary for each debt sale along the way and establish those roles.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you for that. We'll go on to five F, ratification of agreement with Fort Worth Transportation Authority for student transportation. Chancellor to execute a letter of commitment to substitute funds from the North Central Texas Council of Governments, remit funds to TCC Foundation for scholarships.
Okay, so this one's a lot of moving parts in this one. So several years ago, and the board is aware, we entered into a partnership with Trinity Metro to pay for bus passes and bus rides for students to be able to not only get to campus, but also to go about their daily lives as long as they were enrolled here at the cost of the college. And it was capped. We received a discount, but then it's also capped at the amount of a monthly bus pass in the event that a student is using it regularly. You can see in the table at the bottom that the ridership has been a successful thing. COVID obviously put a damper on that. At the time that this was approved, they probably didn't know how much the annual expenditure was going to be, and also we weren't routinely bringing inter-local agreements with other governmental entities to the board. However, out of transparency, you've seen over the last couple of years, we've been doing that. And so we think it's an opportunity to ratify that original agreement, just to have it as part of the full record. What I'll note is that after that, there was discussion with North Central Texas Council of Governments and the Regional Transportation Commission authorized funding, replacement funding essentially for this program, for us to be able to use for this purpose for up to $300,000 for a period of two years. That discussion's been underway for a while, again, sort of delayed by COVID, and so here we are again, ready to kick it off as we returned it in-person instruction. And so a condition of that approval from RTC is that the funding that the college would have spent on transportation be used for the benefit of students. And so what we're recommending is that those dollars would be transferred every month in an equivalent amount, or every quarter, I don't know, we'll have to figure out administratively, but to the foundation to administer that because they obviously have mechanisms in place to evaluate student need and the application process. So this would authorize us to send a letter to COG and to Trinity Metro, letting them know that we are entering into this agreement, but all other of the conditions of the existing contract would remain, and that we would resume that contract once this arrangement through COG is over, and also authorize that transfer of funding to the foundation for this purpose. And so anyway, a lot of moving parts, but it's an exciting program. I think it's served our students well, and it's exciting to see the region interested in doing this and solving these kinds of barriers for students.
Ms. Ellenese, I have a question. Who is funding this? Did you say we had a grant from outside, or is this funded with our tax dollars? I'm just curious.
So currently, it's funded through what's known as our auxiliary fund, which is revenue generated from food concessions and bookstore and things like that. So it's not tax dollars that we're funding it. What is happening with this two-year period and with this particular agreement is that we're getting federal funding through the Regional Transportation Commission that's distributed and managed through the Council of Governments. And so it is federal dollars that are flowing down for this purpose.
Okay, my next question is, how do you determine which students get to use it, or can any student use it?
Any student can use it.
All right, thank you very much.
Any further comments, questions? This has been a really good program in support of our goals and principles as far as supporting our students and meeting them where they are. So thank you to the chancellor for that dialogue, and we appreciate that, Jane.
And I get to sit down for a moment.
Yes, you do. Give you a break. Okay, consideration and approval of Elsevere Nursing Assessment Tools for the fall of 2021, spring of 2022, and summer of 2022 nursing cohorts for a total amount of $370,000. Dr. Sean Madison, how are you, Dr. Madison?
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Because of the complementary nature of items 5G and 5H, I would like to provide a brief overview for both, if it's okay with the board.
I think that's fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Each academic year, TCC's nursing program admits three cohorts. This academic year's cohorts include a fall 2021 cohort with 160 students, a spring 2022 cohort with 160 students, and a summer 22 cohort with an anticipated of 40 to 50 students, an estimated 370 students total. For the past 10 years, the college has invested in the success of our nursing program by providing academic support software, namely Elsevere and ATI products for each cohort to use throughout the duration of the two-year program with access to the products up to 90 days after graduation. This extended access helps TCC nursing graduates prepare for the NCLEX, which is a national licensing exam for nurses. The Elsevere software primarily supplements the didactic or in-classroom-based instruction, and it includes quizzes and nurse skill interventions that allow students to remediate as needed. It also includes a three-day live NCLEX review course as well. By comparison, the ATI products provide a bridge between the classroom learning and the real-life clinical experience by supplementing simulation-based clinical education by providing web-based opportunities for TCC nursing students to practice their clinical and decision-making skills, simulating very real-life situations without compromising, of course, patient well-being or safety. Nursing faculty also use these reports and data generated from both ATI and Elsevere to help them make informed decisions about the nursing curriculum or to develop academic interventions to support the success of our nursing students. So today's consideration for items 5G and 5H represent our requests for the annual board's authorization of these learning tools for nursing students.
Thank you for that, Dr. Morrison. I'm sorry, Dr. Madison, did anyone have any questions or comments? We'll go ahead and go to the next one, since you've already addressed H5I, consideration and approval of contract with Shimatsu Medical Systems, Inc. for the purchase of Shimatsu X-ray machine in the amount of $194,000. Dr. Madison?
Okay, for various programs within health sciences, the college has supported the creation of program-based simulation spaces at Trinity River's East Campus, and these spaces replicate the healthcare environment and support improved educational outcomes with focus on enhancing clinical competence and skills development, teamwork, and in some cases interdisciplinary collaboration. Accordingly, our RadTech program has X-ray simulation rooms at track that allow for various types of medical imaging procedures for teaching and learning purposes to produce work-ready graduates. So the Shimatsu X-ray unit is one of the imaging tools that students will use to support their clinical education in fulfillment of program requirements. Acquisition of this imaging unit will also allow the program to replace and update broken equipment and allow for increased opportunities for students to practice outside of class
Questions or comments for Dr. Madison? Okay. 5J, consideration and approval of contract with Siemens Medical Solutions, USA, Inc. for the purchase of nuclear medicine gamma camera in the amount of $260,804.
Okay, so like the Shimatsu X-ray unit, the gamma camera is an imaging tool used to support the simulation learning environment for students in TCC's Nuclear Medicine Program, a relatively new program established in 2018. Unlike radiography, where patients are exposed to external sources of ionizing radiation to identify possible pathogens, pathogens, excuse me, and fractures, NuMeD Tech specializes in the administration of radioactive pharmaceuticals into patients. Patients themselves become into patients. Patients themselves become radioactive and are placed under the gamma camera, which is used to detect any disease or any issues within the internal organs. Acquisition of the gamma camera will allow the program to continue to build out simulation experience for students in a dedicated space at the Trinity River East Campus. The gamma camera also serves as a key tool in helping students fulfill their program requirements as well.
Any questions or comments?
I'd be curious, I don't find anywhere in here where the address is, how the selection of these particular pieces of equipment were made? How is that done?
These, because of the specialized nature of the equipment, we do use a sole source process for these particular equipment, the gamma camera and the Shimatsu unit as well.
And I presume...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Well, I interrupted you. I'm sorry. I presume this is the equipment that's typically in the healthcare facilities that our graduates work in?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We'll go on to, thank you very much, Dr. Madison. A consideration and approval of contract with Learning Care Group for the Childcare Assistance Program in the amount of $416,000. Dr. LeBlanc?
Good afternoon, President Ayala, trustees, and Dr. Giovanni. Indeed, the action we are requesting is approval of this contract with Learning Care Group. The focus of TCC C Campus District-wide childcare program will begin to address childcare services and needs of approximately 15,000 students in need of childcare. The proposed contract is vital for the implementation of the Childcare Access Means Parents in Schools Grant. It is an assistance program that provides childcare, financial relief, and other services for these parents. We made a request, we made two separate requests for proposals, and each time, we only had one entity to submit a proposal, and that was the Learning Care Group. Part of it is that we have strict criteria that they are to meet, and right now with COVID, the childcare industry is struggling because they can't admit all of the children that they normally would, and they have to take all these precautions. And so only this Learning Care Group was really eligible, really met the criteria that we were asking for. We are in hope in the future for others to be able to fulfill that criteria and to also join our group.
Would you please, are you finished?
Yes, sir, I am.
I'm sorry, madam.
Yes.
Kind of give us some of the elements of this program. Is childcare, does that mean taking the children to a place to stay while the students are in class, or otherwise, or working? You say there are other benefits, kind of just...
Yes, thank you. So I do have Mark Stevens here, who is the coordinator of this grant. And I'll start, and then Mark, you can chime in, you can come on, come on up.
Oh, great.
Yes, so Mark is a social worker by training, and he's perfect for this piece. But what we do is, we, this group has 22 different childcare centers, and our students are eligible to take those children, their criteria that the students must meet, to take their children to the childcare centers. They are charged on a sliding scale based on their income. In addition to the childcare that they receive, we are also offering parenting classes and other services. We plan to partner with other groups such as Catholic Charities, Stay the Course, and other groups that will also help the students. But I'll let Mark share a little bit more about the program.
And one of the questions that I will ask is, where are these childcare centers? Are they in our, on our campuses, or somewhere else? And how do they get there if they're somewhere else?
So we, you did receive a memo that showed the addresses of the actual childcare centers. They are not located on the campuses, they're located throughout Tarrant County.
How do they get there?
Yes, as Dr. LeBlanc stated, we have 22 centers throughout Tarrant County, and on the attachment that we have, I attach the distance from our campuses to the childcare centers with those that have a bus route to those centers, as well as the travel time by car for our students. Again, we do not have childcare on campus. We have partnered with our 22 four-star centers throughout Tarrant County. The four-star is the highest rating that a childcare center can receive from the state of Texas. So we not only wanted to provide childcare for our TCC students, but actual quality childcare. Our students, their children will receive early childhood learning opportunities at these childcare centers. They will be, the staff members and the teachers have to go through specific training, specific for these four-star centers, in order for them to meet the quality rating of a four-star in the state of Texas as well.
I have a question and a comment when it's appropriate, Madam President.
Yes, Dr. Morrison, go ahead.
So first of all, let me take full responsibility for not being informed on this. My concerns are, and this is, as some would say, off the cuff, and first of all, let me just say that, for some, most of you don't know, my PhD is in child development, and even though I have not worked for pay in the field, I have a great concern about that. And I've been working, not for pay, with a group of childcare centers in my community. And so what I, my, first of all, thanks for making the effort to provide childcare for our students. And the absence of childcare on or near our campuses comes back to remind me that that's an issue that has fallen through the cracks, or has fallen out of urgency, but that needs to be revisited. And I will say that having a bus route nearby really isn't sufficient because it's a huge burden for the students to go to multiple places, especially on a bus route. So I'm not saying I am against this contract, but what I'm saying is, I know that there are community childcare centers that have been and that are out there, they're licensed by the state, and they're providing childcare. And I want us, TCC, as part of our capacity building, to help those childcare centers that are near our campuses and our students to serve the needs of those parents and students. And how we do that is probably going to take some more effort, a change of thinking, not just of selecting what's out there, but helping to be a part of the solution. But I think that's imperative. I also think that that might be another way for us to think about how we might spend some of that 87 million we're getting, or whatever money we need to spend, because childcare, ongoing childcare, is going to be a continuing challenge to Tarrant County College students. And I would like for us to take more responsibility in helping to make that more accessible. And greater minds than I can help to create that solution. That's the challenge, I want to put it out there, and I'm willing to stop talking and listen to people who have ideas to make that happen. I don't think this is the best solution. It might be the best in the interim, but I wouldn't like this to be the last time that we visit, providing this opportunity for our students. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I have a question. Can you tell me where the funding comes? You said it was a grant that I was trying to decipher when I was going through the materials. What grant, where the grant is from?
We received the grant from the Department of Education. It is the Childcare Access Means Parents in Schools. We call it the C Campus Grant. And all of the funding that we are receiving is directly from the grant.
Okay, then the other thing I wanted to ask you is, I noticed here it's Exhibit F, it says Learning Care Group, and it explains, it's very short, it explains that it's a grant and that it covers 80, 60, or 40% of the childcare cost. Can you tell me, or you can send it to me later, it's okay, I just want to know how you determine who's eligible and who's not. I know you said there were some qualifications, but I would like specifics on that. If you could get that, that would be wonderful.
Yes, ma'am. We have a application process that our students have to go through, and a few qualifying factors that they have to meet. They have to have participated in at least nine hours at Tarrant County College before applying. They must have a GPA of 2.0, a cumulative GPA of 2.0 at Tarrant County College. They must be within good standing at Tarrant County College as well, that's academically, that's financially, as well as their conduct. They must participate in three family enrichment sessions that we have within the program, and they must be Pell Grant eligible. They do not have to accept the Pell Grant, but they must be eligible for the Pell Grant. And the 80, 60, 40 that you mentioned, that is our sliding scale. That determines, their EFC range that they receive from financial aid in Tarrant County College determines the percentage of the childcare cost that we would cover. So if they are not able to participate financially to a certain degree in the childcare or in their financial aid at Tarrant County College, they would rank higher in our sliding scale that we have for our Childcare Assistance Program.
Are these elements of qualifications a matter of regulatory law, or is these your own standards?
These were standards that were written into the grant.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
Is there a copy of this? Or, I mean, I tried to take notes while you were talking, but is there a copy of this that you could send us, of what you just spoke?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Morrison, go ahead.
When you talk about, if accepted into the program, are you talking, speaking of meeting those criteria that you just spoke about?
Yes, those students, if they meet the criteria.
Okay, and then the other question is, how do childcare centers become part of the Learning Care Group?
The Learning Care Group is more of a umbrella corporation. They have nine other childcare providers that are under them, and three of those nine are within Tarrant County. It is Childtime, Children's Courtyard, and La Petite Academy. And we have 22 locations varying between those three names within Tarrant County that we would be able to partner with.
So just piggybacking off of Dr. Morrison's idea, is there any way for any of the, any local community childcare centers to become four-star and become part of that group, even if they are not originally part of that Childtime Group?
Yes, so that's a good question. This is, we had to put out for bid because it was over a certain amount, and we're bringing this to you for that reason. We will continue making requests for proposals moving forward because we are in hopes of more groups being able to apply. The, I do want to point out that several of these childcare centers work, actually work with Tarrant County College Northeast Campus. And the Northeast Campus childcare program, the professors there were very involved in preparing the grant, and they were very insistent on the criteria that were set, because again, our goal is not just to take care of the children. Yes, we want them to be safe, but we also want them to have an enriched environment during the time that their parents are going to school. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Let me just say that, again, I take full responsibility from having let this issue die too long, because it just seems common sense to me that all of the campuses not only need childcare accessible to their students, but also probably need to be teaching childcare as a career option, because there's a great need, and there's a continuing increasing need. And so I want, as, this is not to deride the work of committee, this is simply to ask the committee to think differently, and to think even from an equity lens, more so about who, not only what students they're serving, what children they're serving, but what community entities are being helped to participate. Again, I go back to my two terms, capacity building, and I guess we need to hire capacity building specialists who defines what that means and integrates it into all the programs at TCC, because in my opinion, that's what we spend $365 million a year for, and that's what we're spending $837 million for over the next eight years. It's all about capacity building for the people in our community. And I want to offer, don't need any more for free events to commit my time to, but as a member of this board, I have the responsibility to offer my services to get involved in this conversation. I know that there are childcare units that are within District Six and throughout Tarrant County that are not a part of this corporate solution. And if you look at the majority of childcare provided in Tarrant County, it's not provided by corporations. It's provided by individual independent childcare directors who are left out of the major funding sources that are floating around Tarrant County right now. Just met with a group of people this past weekend, who told me that directly. So I want to ask the question, is time of the essence, or can we defer this and look at it further? What happens if we don't approve it today, but we approved it at a later time? Because this needs further work, and then the other, so if you say, no, it has to be done today, I want to know, well then, is there more money left to do something else with, to help some of the other independent, not just to help the independent providers, but to help the students have childcare accessible closer to them, where it's not such a burden? The other thing is, I saw your list of recommendations, those are admirable, but achieving nine hours of coursework is no easy feat. What if a person can't get those first nine hours because they don't have anybody to take care of their child so that they can get the first nine hours? And I understand all about good standing and all of those criteria. I just think that sometimes criteria has good intent, but it yields poor results. And I want to ask that everything that TCC does, we look at erasing all barriers, whatever the barrier is to a person that's in need in Tarrant County. We need to erase the barrier and be about capacity building and helping them to achieve. That's my definition of student success. Regardless of where they are, we need to be about taking them where they are and helping them move to where they need to be and where we need them to be, taxpayer, contributing citizens. Thank you.
So, Dr. Morrison, thank you for your comments, and we will take your And we will take your comments very seriously and we'll review the criteria for student participation. With that said, in order to utilize this money, we have to be true to the grant deliverables that we have made a commitment to the U.S. Department of Ed. And we have to stick to what they asked for in, in terms of the criteria for the childcare centers. Now, this is the only group that's available to us at this time. We have, Mark is very modest, but he has called every entity that fit the criteria, and right now they're overwhelmed because of COVID. If we don't have approval for this, we simply cannot implement this program, which means delaying those students that are on the list with children and need of childcare. It means delaying that service for those students even longer. So we will support, obviously, whatever the board decides to do. But those would be the consequences to delaying this. Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you for your comments. Yes, go ahead, Dr. Morrison.
I need to address that. I don't want us to lose the opportunity to serve students. I want to direct this question to the Chancellor. I'm not necessarily expecting him to answer. But I, I want assurance that if we go through with this to accept this grant, this is not the last time we're going to visit this, this year. I mean, I'm not, I'm not able to look at all of the elements and not look at the timeline, and but I don't want us to, to lose the opportunity to serve any students. But I don't want us to exclude the opportunity to serve other students. And so this might be something that's not necessarily comfortable to deal with. But it comes under one of those issues for me of being necessary. And we can have a conversation later. But I, I think this is an urgent issue, not just the approval of this MOU, but this whole issue. And it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
I, it's my understanding this is essentially a one-year contract. Is that correct? And it would start and be in place for the fall semester? Well, it seems to me, I, I, I share some of the concerns that Dr. Morrison has expressed. I'd really like for us to figure out how we can get closer to the care, care closer to our campuses. I don't think we can do that in, in time to make that happen.
Right, so, so we are working on that because we agree with you that the twenty-two, Tarrant County is huge and the twenty-two centers that are available are not always as convenient for every campus as, as we would like. And we continue to work on that. With that said, we've had students on pause, on the waiting list with their children that we could start serving immediately upon the contract being approved, so.
Well, it's entirely possible. Some of these locations may be more favorable for students than being adjacent to the campus. I don't know. It just, that would be individual situations. I, I'm also, I also share Dr. Morrison's concern about the eligibility to participate. And there may be some Department of Education issues there. But we ought to figure out a way to make this available. This is a fundamental vehicle to improve opportunities for student success. And, and I, I would like to see us explore this further. To echo Dr. Morrison's comments. And, and to report back to the board, give us a progress report over in the coming months about what you're finding and, and let us have some input to that process. Not, not to micromanage it, but I, I think this needs to be a priority for the board.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate your support. Thank you.
So with both the Eliminating Barriers Fund, as well as the principal work, has this issue within its agendas, if you will. Just like transportation. And so you heard earlier about transportation and it's a you know, the, the problem with, with the issue there is we don't have enough bus routes. We don't create bus routes. So we, we kind of play the, the cards that were dealt there. With this, there are more moving parts to it. I haven't been associated with this and had very successful childcare on campuses. There are dynamics to it that, that certainly are not, can't be overcome. But it does take an intentful, purposeful action. That's why it is part of the principal work. And as well as when you look at eliminating barriers, this is one of the top two or three items related to the barriers that students have. So it certainly is on the radar. It's not intended to be a one-off and done initiative. Taking into consideration the issues related to capacity and related to location. It's, it's a similar challenge everywhere in the balance of that. So again, as well as space and accommodating such, as well as trained workers and so on. So there's a lot, this is not, you know, these are not excuses. There's, I just want to mention, there's a lot of moving parts to making this happen, much more complicated than, than the bus transportation. So the efforts again that we've undergone and continue to undergo with this will continue related to providing childcare assistance or even just childcare support in some way to our students.
I'm sorry, I have another question. And I, I, I am confident that staff has given this what they consider their best. But let me just remind you that there are seven people here who are elected as policymakers. And when we look at things, we don't only look at the policymaking for this board because we see policies as something that can be changed in a meeting with a properly called meeting with a quorum, et cetera, et cetera. And so we look at policy, or let me speak for myself. I look at policy as going to all levels, whether it's our board, city, county, state, nation. Those are people just like us. Also, we know that the people up in the Department of Ed who are writing those grant proposals, they're people just like us. And it's important that we communicate certain things don't work for us. That's why we have local governance. And I can't believe that we have a a proposal for TCC that doesn't include, or at least a little bit of participation from child, CCMS and local childcare people. The first red flag I saw was Michigan. And it's not a red flag because it's Michigan. It's a red flag because I know that there are childcare providers in my community and across Tarrant County who've been providing childcare throughout COVID. Had they not been providing childcare, the people at the grocery store, the clerks, the EMTs, the nurses, the doctors, and a lot of other people would not have been able to do their work. And so it is time that our society, and it has to begin with us, recognizes that quality, accessible childcare is essential to the success of our society. And we have to accept our role, responsibility, and opportunity to make a difference. This is a prime example. And I'm, I'm just asking that we take the big bite and accept that challenge. Thank you. And I, you can tell I'm losing my voice, and don't applaud. Thank you.
It's, it's the passion. I, I do want to share that we have been working with the entities that you just described. And I'll let Mark share that with you.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for not giving further clarification stated. In the beginning of this process of trying to get childcare for our students, we were initially partnered with CCMS. We spoke to them, we had preliminary discussions, and they promised us that it would be ninety-four star centers throughout Tarrant County that we would be able to partner with them and be able to get a hold of these childcare centers throughout Tarrant County. And that was April of 2020, and during the beginning of the pandemic. Once the pandemic and the ensuing shutdowns happened, CCMS lost a majority of their funding. Through our constant communication, we were told that they were unsure about the total amount of funding that they would be able to have, be able to partner with us in order to help our students. So in turn, we lost, our partnership was kind of severed due to their loss of funding. And in our talks, they wanted a fifteen percent helping fee that they added on to our initial contract. We worked with legal to get that into our budget, and we sent it to CCMS on two separate occasions to no response. So during all of this time, we had students on our waitlist. We had students who were excited about this program, who we were unable to help. With that being said, we decided to come up with this MOU process that we have created over the past eight or nine months. We've had to revise a multitude of times due to the Department of Education regulations. And we came to this process where we are now. We know it is not the best, but as Dr. LeBlanc stated earlier, we have had students on our waitlist asking us for help since last summer. So that is part of the reason why we want to not delay it any further. We don't want to lose any trust within the students that we have had waiting since last summer. And also, we have not heard much back from CCMS. As you stated earlier, we should partner with them. We have, we have attempted to, to no avail so far.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for the discussion on that item. I think that childcare is essential. It's one of our goals. So thank you all for your comments and your feedback. Chancellor, I do have a question. What, you talked about this falls under the principal work. Which one does this fall under, this particular one?
ISSM.
ISSM, okay. Is there a way that maybe we could get an update in one of the upcoming meetings and kind of find out where we are with that, and we can keep that on our radar? Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions? Thank you for that. Okay, let's see. We'll go to, I believe we're on L, yes. Five L, Consideration and Approval of Three-Year Enterprise Agreement for Cisco Unified Communications with General Data Tech LP for a total amount of six hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents with an annual cost of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and forty cents. Mr. Pacheco.
Yes, these next two items that I'll be bringing up here relate to our communication system that we have at the school for our phones. This request right here is for the approval for the Cisco Unified Call Manager Enterprise Agreement. The Call Manager is a call router and integration system based on the latest internet technologies. It uses TCC's own internal network to route all incoming, outgoing, and cross-district communications using either physical handsets or the Cisco Jabber soft phones on our employees' mobile phones and computers. Services included in our enterprise licenses such as Enterprise Emergency Code Bloom Phones, police dispatch and alerting and recording capabilities, the alert is notifications to phones, voicemail, and integrated voice routing, and many other services come underneath this. This agreement is for the critical platform is for three years. Welcome. Any questions?
Questions or comments for Mr. Pacheco? Okay, thank you. Five M, Consideration and Approval of Contract with Lumen Century Link for District-Wide Telephone Services at the TCCD Data Center on the Trinity River Campus and TCCD's Overflow Site in Allen, Texas for three years in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Mr. Pacheco.
The Lumen Century Link contract is a three-year contract, and its services are used by Cisco's Call Manager System that I just presented. Normally for internal traffic in the district, the Cisco Call Manager uses existing network infrastructure to make and receive calls and manage all the emergency devices and other features. However, to send and receive a call from off-campus and out of the district, there is a need for a carrier to handle the telephone traffic, like a person having a hard phone line. Lumen Century Link, by the way, of our RFP process, won the contract to be the carrier that provides not only for our primary call systems in the district, but also for the overflow capabilities at our backup data center in Allen. Any questions?
Questions or comments? I do have a question, Mr. Pacheco. An overflow site, is that just a remote site? Is that a DR site? Is that a business recovery site?
It's part of our disaster recovery site itself. But what we use there is when we exceed a certain amount, it automatically switches to that to give us more capability for the phone systems.
Okay, so what is the standard expectation for the overflow sites? If it's the business, part of the business recovery site or the disaster recovery, is it to bring it up to a hundred percent, or is this just to bring it up to a certain percentage, like twenty-five percent?
For the phone system here, it's really just more capacity for us. It's not really for it to replace.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, these are the review of proposed individual action items for the board meeting on June seventeenth. We're on six A. Consideration and Approval of Contract with Multiple Firms for Professional Qualified Practitioners and Learning Organizations for Training to the Business Community for Two Years with Three One-Year Options to Renew Up to an Annual Amount of One Million Dollars. Ms. Shannon Bryant.
Hi, good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Thank you. So this consideration and approval today is for the continued support of resources for the new Corporate Solutions and Economic Development Strategy. I just recently for the team hired two subject matter experts, one in the area of organizational effectiveness and leadership, the other in the area of advanced manufacturing, as well as process improvement and efficiency. And their roles are really to do two things. One is to build content curriculum to be able to facilitate themselves, but also to build a bench strength of facilitators, coaches, and consultants that we can use as needed for the purpose of being able to respond to businesses as we anticipate great needs among the businesses of Tarrant County. So that is the purpose of this. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? I just, I do have a question on this. What is the baseline that you use for this to start?
Certainly. So we just submitted an RFQ out for bid and came back. The individuals that are listed here are both organizations as well as individuals. And most of them fall under the area of being experts and practitioners in the organizational effectiveness or process improvement space. And they are based on experience, qualifications, certifications that they might have that are necessary to administer for businesses that have specific needs for certifications or certifications that they need for people who are qualified in their organizations. And then also through the interview process, these individuals, we also ask for success stories of other organizations, not only here in Texas, but across the country of individuals they've worked with.
As a part of the RFQ process, or maybe just some information to provide to us at a later time, was there a published schedule of pay rates, like for, for per classroom hour type instruction?
So the next step in this process is working with procurement for each of those individuals as well as organizations, past experience in working with individuals like this. They usually come with varying pay rates based on their level of expertise and education that's needed based on what their, their qualifications are for working with organizations. So we'll be doing that. That'll be the next step, past approval.
Could, could you give us, I would like to put this in context. Tell, can you tell us a success story? What, what, what is success, what are these people, just, is there a success story?
Certainly. So working in this industry and the learning and development space based on corporate, corporate America and working with organizations, when we are going out and we are engaging with businesses, we are talking to the out and we are engaging with businesses, we are talking to the executives, senior leadership for organizations, and typically they have a very specific need that is based around their incumbent workforce. So our goal is to work with them to identify a potential customized solution. So in our proposals, not only just us, but a lot of people in this field, including these practitioners that you see listed here today, the purpose is to develop a proposal based on learning objectives and scope of customized work in that we also indicate a potential outcome that would return, provide a return on investment to that organization. So that return on investment or a success story could be that we provided leadership tools to five new leaders on the team who have never been leaders before. So it puts them on a trajectory of success. Perhaps we do a customized engagement or a consulting engagement with an individual who might be a difficult employee. They've been with the team for a long time. They want to retain that person and prevent them from leaving the organization. So it's based on ROIs that we can provide back to the company based on what the specific need is. So a lot of these individuals, we did have them present success stories in that capacity. I can give you, for example, one of them would be, yes, one of them, example would be Lean Concepts that's listed here, a gentleman who works specifically in the area of Lean and Six Sigma and process efficiency, working with major manufacturing companies specifically in the area of process flow on their manufacturing floor. So one of the examples given was that he worked in an HR department based on a 35-step process that this HR department had and how many people and how much time and effort it was taking, and how through Lean principles, they were able to reduce that 35-step process down to approximately 10 to 12 steps, and it was able to provide efficiency for the organization.
Okay.
And I assume we, the college gets paid for providing that service to the company?
Yes, exactly.
To our client. So
Yes, absolutely.
Some of this is, cost is recovered.
Yes. Chancellor, did you want to?
Yes, that's the case. And each contract would be different as it relates to overhead costs as well as, you know, the, the margin that we might receive from those efforts. And they'll, they'll vary depending upon contract.
Well, I have no problem with it. I would add that the evaluation criteria and process goes to what I said earlier about the other contracts. We'd like a little more information, I think.
Certainly.
Let me ask you a practical question. Not be applicable, but I went to a, I had lunch with a CEO of a very successful company that does a lot of important work. And to get to, he's in Crowley, and he drives by, you know, Tarleton College and Tarrant County College every time he comes, goes to his office. And so I walked into one of his places, and he said, boy, do we need mechanics. And I think about your college every time I pass Tarleton College. What would he, what would you do with somebody like that? I mean, he would be a client, and he would be a client, and we would help him train mechanics. Is that correct? Or is that?
In some instances, yes, that would be true. In that instance, we would have a conversation with that gentleman pertaining to what the specific needs are. And in some cases, we may serve as a broker for the college, coming back to the president or the dean or the chair where that particular skill set that he's looking for is needed and making that connection within the college. So we can make sure that we're providing a curriculum or content of educational platform that will eventually lead students to those positions. It could be interns, it could be an apprenticeship program. So again, that's a case where the corporate solutions team will serve as a broker. Or there could be other cases where perhaps we acknowledge the fact that there's a situation where we could provide an assessment for the incoming hires of that president and his human resource department. And as they come in, we assess those individuals, and perhaps they meet a certain skill set and a benchmark on an assessment that we would establish for them. And if those people come in with a certain aptitude, but maybe not a particular skill set, we would be able to provide a customized learning solution that would parallel their orientation to be able to get them up and running a little bit faster as they enter the job.
Okay, so this guy wants a contract. No, I'm kidding. Go ahead.
You give me his number, and I'll go call him and talk to him. How about that?
I will.
All right, you do that. We'll go visit with him. Again, that's when it comes into the customized solution.
Putting all this in context. I just, thank you.
It's all about meeting every company where they are, because everyone's a little bit different. Each one has a unique footprint.
Has consideration been given to growing the pool outside of this particular list of practitioners? And I'm thinking specifically about if there are already faculty who are here as a part of the college, are they also considered as practitioners, if you will, who could participate in delivering this instruction?
Yeah. So as part of the strategy building for this department, part of it included providing a budget for using adjuncts across the campuses for more technical-related programs. But I do anticipate from growth of this program, our two areas are going to be the organizational effectiveness, leadership, process improvement. And so for that reason, typically it's practitioners who do this every day in companies and organizations, then they can also respond much quicker for us to be able to provide longer engagements. But I do anticipate that in the future, I'll be back requesting additional people be added to this pool as we go along and we scale the work.
Any further questions? Discussion? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item B, 6B, consideration and approval of contract with U.S. Aviation Group for pilot flight training for professional pilot program for three years in the amount of $2 million. Dr. Blankenbaker.
Good afternoon again, President Ayala and members of the Board of Trustees. This is approval for a three-year contract with U.S. Aviation Group to provide flight instruction training for our students in the professional pilot program. The professional pilot program has two tracks. Earlier, you heard me talk about helicopter flight training. This contract is for flight training for airplanes. U.S. Aviation Group is a continuing flight training provider with TCC. They own and maintain the airplanes and provide credential instructors. And both TCC and U.S. Aviation Group are follow and are certified by the Federal Aviation Administration. So we work in tandem with U.S. Aviation Group in partnership to deliver the instruction, both lecture and flight, to our students. I welcome any questions you might have.
As part of the, of the new trustees coming in on our board, are they invited out to see the phenomenal things that are going on out there at the, at the, at the campus?
Yes, sir. That is exactly what our Chancellor Jovanini is planning to do. Yes.
There's a machine in there that you go into, that I went into, that sort of like you're in the airplane, and I touched a button, and I went, I crashed.
It's a, it's a flight simulator.
Yeah, the flight simulator. I, I, if you're brave, new trustees, newer trustees, if you want to have the fear of your life, go into that flight simulator and touch a button that goes wrong. It's, it's amazing.
Oh, we look forward to hosting.
But please, give them a, you know, glass of wine before they get in.
We can also arrange parachuting out of a helicopter plane if you, if you like.
I was invited to, no, who was invited to? I'm sorry, I'm delaying time. I think one of us was, was invited to go out of the, you know, out there in the airplane to do a dropping somewhere. Anyway, it's.
I look forward to hosting our new trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay. All right. 6C, we're going to 6C. Yes, consideration of contract with Prestige Elevator Company for elevator maintenance and repair services for an initial 26-month term in the amount of $304,772, and total five years and two months amount of $726,764. Ms. Alanis.
Yes. So historically, we have used a cooperative agreement through the state for our elevator services. We have recently gone out with our own requests for proposals to ensure that we could tailor those services more to the specific needs of the college. I believe, I meant to look this up, about 63 elevators, escalators, lifts throughout the district that are required for maintenance. And so we actually were able to reduce the cost by, by having more tailored services that are very specific to what we need. And so we are making a recommendation to engage Prestige. We have suggested sort of an odd term of 26 months as we continue to work to align our contract periods with our fiscal year so that we can plan budgetarily over time. The, the company is experienced and has large contracts across the state. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Hi, this is Quinn Morrison. Ms. Alanis, does any of our programs that we offer at TCC offer the training that's necessary for one to be skilled in servicing elevators?
I do not know the answer to that.
If not, I would like to ask us to explore that. Elevators are going anyplace, and I think that would be a good program for us to pursue offering to our students. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Alanis, thank you for that question, Dr. Morrison. One of the things I was going to ask is, is there any information that we get from these maintenance and repair services or reports that might help us in, as we plan these new buildings, whether or not there might be sensors that could be included, you know, for predictive type maintenance services? Or do we use any of that information?
So I suspect that we use the expertise of our design teams more than our, our maintenance firm for these, but we can certainly ask staff to look into that.
Just curious, yeah. Any other questions, comments, discussions? Okay. All right, we'll go to 6D. Consideration and approval of an amendment to the contract with Beck Architecture for the district-wide wayfinding and signage in the amount of $561,580.40.
Yeah. So you may recall that earlier this year, we brought to you initial Phase One engagement with Beck to help us with wayfinding. This is surprisingly complicated across a district like ours to not only help us think about nomenclature and so on, but also ultimately design of where different types of signage would go across the district and be consistent from place to place. We've, we've certainly got our, some of our 3GAP panels working on this as well to come up with common language about the different types of spaces across the college, and also to figure out more common naming conventions rather than the, the coding that we currently use as all of our building names, which I know is frustrating to all of us. So this is the next several phases of that, leading up to when we would be positioned to have construction management for the long-term implementation. This will be a multimillion-dollar piece of our bond program ultimately as we install signage across the college. We are, we have a group that's working with our current design teams with both Northwest and Southeast to make sure that the architects, as well as Beck, are working well together to plan for how this wayfinding will be integrated. But this will, this will significantly advance the project, and you'll see that the, the various phases are outlined in the board memo that was provided. Be happy to answer any questions. I should note, too, that this will also lay the groundwork for some of the digital tools that we plan to make available to students and visitors to our campus as well.
Other comments, discussion? You read my mind, Ms. Alanis. I was going to ask about digital. Okay, we'll go on to the next one, which is 6E. It is consideration and approval of contract with Skanska USA Building, Inc. for Buildings 1 and 2 of the redevelopment construction project on the Northwest Campus in the amount of $105,134,731. Ms. Alanis.
So the board has been preparing this, for this for a while now, and it is the, the full construction contract for Buildings 1 and 2, which is basically half of the redevelopment of, of the campus. We had, we've got an arrangement with our construction firm. It's a construction manager at risk, which requires them to provide us a guaranteed maximum price for the project. We've brought that to you incrementally, depending on the stage of design and our ability to get firm pricing at, at each stage as, as we've done different pieces of the work. This is the conclusion of Buildings 1 and 2, based on the construction drawings that, that had been prepared and that the, the board has been briefed on. It's very exciting progress.
Do we happen to have any slides that we could show which ones those are, the buildings themselves?
You know what? I didn't think to bring that, but I can certainly email it to you afterwards, the site plan that shows you which, which of those two buildings. Building 1 is where the early college high school will eventually be housed, as well as a lot of our science labs. Building 2 is the one that will be more of a front door to the, to the campus as well with a lot of the onboarding activities. But I can send you a site plan highlighting those things.
Thank you. As a matter of process, once we are locked into this GMP or the incremental GMPs, how is the board informed of significant change orders that would happen within that GMP?
Yes. So we, we, any significant change orders and also any really schedule deviations will be presented to the board in the, not only the written monthly reports, but also the quarterly reports. If it's anything that's over $100,000, then we would bring that to you as well. And certainly, the, the other thing I'll add is that the GMP is based on Skanska having gone out and actually received bids on all of the various components of the construction. In the event that they're actually able to achieve even better pricing at that point, the contract is written where that's to the benefit of the college. And so we would be able to retain those savings as part of our, our contingency going forward. But we distributed, I believe, in the notebook we gave you, but I can send it to you separately. We've given you a lot of material, of the, the handbook related to the bond program that describes the change order process that's required, not only administratively for some of the more minor things, but then for triggering which ones would come back to the board. But I'd be happy to email that to you again. Yeah. But the construction manager at risk title of Skanska means that they are at risk in the event that it's over, over what we've agreed to here.
And remind me again of what happens if they're under?
If, if they are under based on achieving better pricing than the bids that were achieved during the development of the GMP, those dollars actually revert to the college and would be available basically as, as part of our contingency as we continue to, to manage the project. And so we don't anticipate that to happen, but obviously the market is what it is and as, as they get to those various parts of the program.
Any other questions, discussion, comments? Okay, we'll go on to 6F. Consideration and approval of construction contract with Chambers Engineering for, let me scroll down, for Chambers Engineering for the Trinity River Parking Garage and the Trinity River Campus East Parking Lot Improvements in the amount of $1,211,696. Ms. Alanis.
Yes. So we came to the board earlier this year to do some of the design work associated with improvements to the parking garage, as well as the truck parking lot. And there's, there's several things going on here. There's some unimproved spaces over at Trek that will be now paved and will also re-stripe and realign and change the, the pattern of traffic flows to that particular area to increase capacity for parking. That's always at a premium at that particular location. Within the garage here at Trinity River, there's some consistent challenges. The, the current space is available for, for employees, even with the move of, of the administrative staff over here at the end of the month, is over allocated, and it's under allocated for students in terms of where the gates are and access and those kinds of things. In addition, there's a pretty substantial challenge with queuing at peak times. So at 5:00, when employees are trying to go home and so on. And so there's some redesign of the, of the And so, there's some redesign of the guard shacks and the entrances and exits and so on that is, that are being planned to improve how that will work. So, anyway, this is the implementation of all of that after the design work that's been done previously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Allenese. 6F is in Frank, we'll go, I'm sorry, 6G. Consideration and approval of construction manager agreement, general conditions and exhibits with Burn, Potair, I guess, Hunt Joint Venture, Inc. for pre-construction services at the Southeast Campus renovation expansion in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Ms. Allenese?
So, similar to the arrangement that we made with Skanska when we brought them on as the C Mar, we have gone through a procurement process for the construction manager at risk for Southeast, and this joint venture has been selected as that partner through a rigorous evaluation process. And what we will do, just like what we did with Skanska, is engage them in pre-construction services. To have them working at this stage alongside the design team allows us to start to address construction concerns along the way and have a really good partnership leading into when we would actually bid those projects, or they would bid those projects, and we would get to a guaranteed maximum price on those improvements as well. They'll also help us significantly in terms of starting to think about phasing of the construction program and how all of that would work and how we would continue to fly the plane while we're, while we're building it. And with the substantial renovation that's going to occur at Southeast, that's going to be a big consideration in terms of how all of that gets done. So, having them on board now is appropriate. I will note that the MOU that we did previously with our other partners about ensuring that they're good partners and being, engaging us with state-of-the-art technology and so on, they'll, that will either be signed or integrated specifically into future, the contract itself, and so they'll be held to those same standards as we continue to develop our digital roadmap and our building standards and so on. And this actually gives me an opportunity to say as well, we had anticipated that we would have the full, the first draft digital roadmap report for you today, based on the size of the agenda, but also needing a little bit more time with staff. We received a revision back based on a lot of questions that we had with this last round just this week, so we would like to do a little bit more due diligence before it's prepared for your consumption, but we're planning on doing that in August, and so it aligns nicely with how these projects are moving along.
Ma'am President, I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Morrison, go ahead.
So, are you telling me that we have selected Burn, Potair, and Hunt as the construction manager at risk for Southeast Campus? Has the board approved that? Has that come to the board before?
This is the first step in that approval, so if you approve the pre-construction services, then the intent is to continue on that path, and we would bring back future contracts for the construction of the facilities, but this is, this is the very first step and announcement based on the RFP that we conducted to bring them to the table.
So, did the board have information about that RFP and who presented and who was scored and, and all of that?
So, I believe we included a similar attachment that we have to the others that lists who the responders were and the criteria that were established. Based on the questions today, I'll go back and visit with the chancellor about the opportunity to expand some of that information and provide it for the packet for next week.
Okay, but so, we're already down the road. If we approve this agenda item, it means that unless something catastrophic happens that Burn will be the CSR M4 Southeast Campus. And what is that be, what is that anticipated being, that cost?
So, I believe the budget for Southeast Campus, but this probably includes the design fees, is a hundred and twenty-five million, and so the construction costs would be, you know, eighty percent of that or so. But yes, so this is, this is the first step and a significant award to this joint venture.
Okay, y'all kind of slid that one in on us, I think, Susan. I don't think that we were clear, I, you know, it's okay, but to me, we talked a little bit about this last time with the gentleman who was there. He said that we had, that the person had been selected, but he wasn't revealing it. And I just think this is kind of a less than forthcoming way to slide that in on us. I wouldn't like that to happen again. Thank you.
Other comments, discussion? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to H. Consideration and approval of the amendment to the professional services agreement with Perkins &amp; Will, Inc. for additional design services on the Southeast Campus renovation and expansion project in the amount of five million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
So, during the quarterly bond program update last month, one of the items that we mentioned would be moving forward is the remaining design contract with Perkins &amp; Will for Southeast. Again, you know, we engaged them in some initial work for them to get through where they are now, which is nearing the completion of design development by working through programming and requirements. You received the site plan associated with this last month, and so this would be the remaining engagement for them to complete the design through the conclusion of the, of the design effort.
Questions, discussion? Mr. Moore? Go ahead.
It seems to me that when we, and this sort of relates back to the previous item, I think what I would like to see is putting these various contracts, you bring them to us a piece at a time, I understand that, but they need to be in context, context, so we get the big picture of what's going on. I'm looking on the second page of this agreement with Perkins &amp; Will, where it gives us the big picture, all the way down to this five-point-eight million dollars that's proposed here. And I don't think we, we're getting this, and I appreciate this, this recapping of what's going on here today. I would like to suggest there needs to be a way that when we are doing an initial contract, like is on this previous item, that we have a picture of where we're headed. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Sure, and I'll tell you the distinction between the two about why we put the table on the second one and we haven't on the initial one with the C Mar for Southeast. The second one, we certainly have enough information to sort of describe the history and where we're going, and what we've done in the other items that you have for you today is it tends, just like wayfinding, our goal is to project what sort of the future cost of that project is going to be. With the C Mar for Southeast, the reason for this initial engagement is to work with them to really deeply flesh out the cost. When you hire an architect, you're hiring, or, excuse me, the construction firm, you're hiring them based on their qualifications and so on, but there's a lot for them to learn and for us to learn in terms of how that, those costs are ultimately going to play out, and we'll have a lot more information that we will be presenting to you along the way as that work progresses with Southeast. So, it's a little bit more difficult to describe here. We could certainly tell you the percentage of construction that a design fee typically is, and maybe that would help provide some context for, you know, for how the parts fit together, but...
Well, obviously, somebody knows what the total amount of money that's allocated for this, and somebody can put together a roadmap or an outline or something that tells us. I think this goes to what Dr. Morrison's saying about this, this previous item, is we're launching down this path with these people, and this is going to be a multimillion-dollar contract before we're through with it.
Yes, so, so the last line indicates the estimated construction value is ninety-two million dollars, and so it is indeed a big contract that we are launching that partnership, and we've gone through a very formal process consistent with state statute to arrive at making the recommendation for this firm.
Okay, then, my problem is, yes, it says ninety-two million dollars, but it's a little bit like you come in with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar program, and we, as the board, need to understand very clearly, and I think we do now, I think it's come out, but we're starting down a path that's going to lead to the ninety-two million dollars. I would like to suggest to you that it's not about the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it's about the ninety-two million dollars. Ratifying the decision that's been made to go with this firm and on this path, that needs to be painted very clearly for us as board members, I think. I sort of feel like when we come in with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar item to approve, it needs to be very clear what we're starting here, and I sort of think that's the point Dr. Morrison's making a while ago, this is a major decision point.
It is.
And, and I'd like to see a little more of the rationale behind the decision that's being made. This is, this is a big decision, and we're giving, given not a whole lot of information about it. I have not previously studied this, but my concern is that we're making a major decision without realizing potentially, and I think, I'll be perfectly candid, I think that's why we had some of the disputes we had going back into last fall, when we were, we were concerned about suddenly realizing we were committed to spend a whole lot of money, and I don't think the board fully appreciated how we got there. Now, that's just my opinion, I'd like to hear any of my colleagues share that concern, but...
Thank you for that, Mr. Bar. Ms. Collin, yes, go ahead.
Perhaps, as I'm sitting here thinking, so I professionally am in the middle of building a very large building, so on a daily basis, I'm thinking about the whole process involved in selecting a construction manager and, you know, cost validation and schematic design and design development. I mean, like, those are things that, that I dream about at this point, but would it be helpful if we had an opportunity to kind of just go from A to Z? Like, how, how, I don't want to say that we all need, you know, a lesson in how a bond is implemented, but maybe the various stages, because I think I have a different reaction when I look at some of these, you know, resolutions, because I know what's coming next, or I know what would happen before, because I'm in this on a daily basis. Would it be helpful for, for the board to just have kind of a level-setting understanding and an opportunity to influence what the expectations are in terms of what it would look like? Because I do agree that in the, the second example where we have the table, it paints a complete picture, whereas in the awarding of the other contracts, because we are at the beginning of that phase, maybe creating kind of a shell of what is coming next and what the other values are associated with each step of the process may just give us a more complete picture about what we're about to embark on.
Sure, so, I think we've endeavored, as we've been having our quarterly updates, trying to prepare the board for the things that are coming up next. So, for example, you know, we identified that this contract was, was going to be presented, and we've been going through a selection process. What I would suggest is that perhaps, in this instance, if we add the table, we can identify the design costs that are part of this, as well as show TBD basically on the ninety-two million dollars, because there's a lot of work to be done there about how that project will be divided up and so on, and maybe that would have jumped out a little bit more clearly, so, so we can certainly do that. The other thing I want to emphasize is that there is, is very deliberate state statute around how we go through a review process, and part of the things that we do is work to make sure that we don't subject ourselves to protests by vendors who feel like they weren't treated fairly in the process and so on. So, we do have a committee of folks that look at this. Jacobs has certainly been a partner in this now that they're on board, which has been very, very helpful based on their expertise outside of the organization. So, so part of the, perhaps feeling less included in the, you know, the final firm is, it is indeed that you've charged the staff with making sure that we conform to that, so, but we can, we can enhance some of the information that's available here if that's desired.
Thank you for that. Anyone else have any, go ahead, Mr. Bar.
Well, I would just suggest that the process is the process, and as far as meeting state statutes or anything like that, I'm confident that there's a strong effort to see that we're doing it right. I don't think there's anything wrong with sharing some of that information with the board. It's ultimately responsible for whether this money's being appropriately expended or not. So, for example, you do have, we do have the points, the total points were awarded that are shown here, but we have no background on how those decisions, how those points were awarded, what was considered important and so forth.
So, so we'll go back and take a look at whether we've clearly articulated the waiting information about how they were evaluated. We do consistently use best value as our methodology for selecting firms so that we can take into consideration a variety of things about the firm, as well as their MWB participation and so on, but we can go back and look at that attachment and see if there's some improvements we can make.
Can we have that information before our board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bar. Dr. Morrison, did you have a question?
I had a statement or a comment.
Okay.
So, I'm going to suggest that you be so bold as to start back with a blank sheet of paper, and since you are the COO, all of those departments report to you, and have all of them start over, this is not stop anything, this is an additional duty, to start over and look at what are the criteria, how does that play, and how could we get better results if we had a different criteria? Because we all know it's a matter of choice or selection. When we use the definition for these terms, somebody created them, and I'm just thinking that we are Tarrant County College, we are bold, we are trying to do the right thing. We are one college, focusing on student success and serving the community, and we are spending three hundred and sixty-five-plus million dollars a year, plus over the next seven, eight years, we're spending eight hundred and thirty-seven-plus million dollars. And we need to make a difference right now in the lives of all of the millions of people who live in Tarrant County. We need to be increasing trained workforce. Anybody that we're hiring for a job, we need to be training people to take those jobs. Anybody that we're selecting for contracts, we need to make sure that they are reinvesting in the community, that they are hiring people, that they're training people, and that they're on board with our three goals, our three goals and eight principles. It's bold, but it's necessary. There is no time to delay doing a better job of creating a more trained workforce right here in Tarrant County. We cannot depend on importing trained people. We can't depend on hiring consultants. We can't depend on somebody else coming over here to carry our load. We have to be right here, responsible every day, to train in the people we need to ensure the future, not only of our college, but our community. And so, I'm saying, take a blank sheet of paper, go back and look at the criteria. There's one set of criteria that the net, the state uses to pick their contractors, and we want to, we want to abide with state law, but we know that state law can be changed, because there's some laws on the books right now that need to be changed. There are about to be some laws on the books that don't need to be there. So, a law is not everlasting, and so I want to encourage you, while you have all this money at your hand, to be bold about that and to take another look at how we do this. We don't have to do things the way they've always been done, and we can still be right. So, as one of my bosses used to say, let's, everybody get out their big chief tablet and their number-two pencil, and let's get to work. Make it work, make it different, make it better, and I believe we'll be very proud and pleased of the results, and yes, we'll be abiding by the law. Thank you.
Thank you for that as well, Dr. Morrison. Chancellor, we've had several suggestions and considerations. How would you suggest that we could get those? How would you suggest that we could get those documented and put forward so that way we can, it gives a framework for Ms. Allenese and her team moving forward?
Sure. So I think what was conveyed related to the more information, being able to chart a course and, you know, fill in the blanks as we know them currently and what might come in the future. Not only articulate it verbally, it also in these documents, but also perhaps graphically as it relates to the whole picture. Some board members may have more experience than others and it's understood. But to chart a much more informative path from beginning to end on these things. And we can certainly do that by the next board meeting for these items.
Okay. Any other? Thank you all for the discussion. Those are very good comments. And, you know, whether it's a summary, one pager to kind of start it, and then all the detail, I don't know if that would be helpful for us as well, but I appreciate all the Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to make one final statement on this.
Yes.
I want it understood. I am not making these comments for the purpose of venting. This is not about venting. This is about helping us all do a better job of fulfilling our full responsibility to the citizens of Tarrant County and to us fully embodying the oaths that we each have taken as we have assumed these responsibilities. Thank you.
No, thank you for that, Dr. Morrison. I think that this is a really good dialogue that we had, and I think it's going to be very helpful in us moving forward and establishing some best practices and especially as we go through this bond. So thank you for those, everyone. Let's go on to I. Before we go to I, can we do I? Yeah, okay. It's okay. We'll do consideration and approval of the amendment to the agreement with Jacobs Project Management Company for asset management support related to the 2019 bond program in the amount of $2,406,100, Ms. Allenese.
Yeah, so this is a new item that we want to present to you to talk about some of the things that we've been in discussion with Jacobs with since they joined the team. And I've got a couple of slides to pull up. I think they're on the way. But there has not been a complete facility condition assessment at the college since 2011. And the challenge with facility condition assessments is that they age quickly. And if you don't maintain them and store the data in a way that can be used as an ongoing tool in your decision-making about facilities, then it gets out of date quickly and we find ourselves at a place where we think that we would be able to be much more effective in our decision-making if we stepped back a little bit and put those tools and stood up a program here at the college to make sure that we're not only building our facilities effectively, but also maintaining them over time, which ultimately can save some money. So just to give you a little bit of a background on what that means is that, a couple of things. We need to know the condition of all of our facilities at the building level. So, you know, each building is a combination of its parts, right? And so there's sort of an average score about how its mechanical systems may be, how the condition is, how the building envelope condition is and so on. And so having an understanding of that is really important. But then also down to the component level, having a complete inventory of the various equipment, the expected useful life of that equipment, the replacement cycle of that equipment and so on, and in a really aggregate way is helpful. What we, the previous assessments have not resulted in us developing a database that aggregates all of those different sort of siloed disciplines from a facilities perspective into an aggregate tool to be able to manage the facility repair and maintenance, as well as replacement over time. And so we think it's important for us to spend some time doing that. So, next slide. And I'm going to give you a couple of illustrations that were lightbulb moments for me even working with Jacobs. And so, and I'm going to use South Campus as an illustration in that. So obviously Southeast and Northwest had the full master plan and thought process about redeveloping those campuses. However, when you look at all of the MEP projects, as well as the principal projects that will be implemented there over time, there's a significant investment in each of the other campuses, however, probably in a less aggregate feeling way. When you look at timing of different types of improvements that are currently anticipated across that campus, part of the challenge is that you look at some of those facilities and you do realize that you're touching a significant portion of them over time. And it's worthy of pausing to figure out if you're touching such a significant portion of it with renovation, about whether the building ought to come down and be replaced. In addition, there's a really important role of packaging and sequencing projects to avoid disruption. So, for example, when we first looked at the schedule that was proposed even for some of the classroom updates, what we realized is that it puts you in different wings of a building every year for five years, doing different pieces of it, which would be really disruptive to operations, for example. And also more costly at the end of the day in terms of how you package those improvements with vendors and so on. And so really getting our arms around how all of this spits together is really critical. This could be true for the Northwest camp, or excuse me, the Northeast Campus and Trinity River as well, when you think about that. So having the condition assessment will work in tandem with the master planning that we talked about for those other campuses as we roll out the bond program. Next slide. So, couple of things. What we're in need of is having a complete and up-to-date inventory, as well as a software system where we maintain that and use it as a management tool over time. And it will also, it'll allow us to have sort of that comprehensive view of our facilities. It will allow us every year as we're updating our five-year capital plan to have an understanding of systems that are reaching the end of their useful life in a more systematic way in making those decisions and planning for them. What it will allow is that lifecycle analysis, so we can get more precise and consistent in our budget planning, in our contracting and so on. It'll allow us to really align resources in a way that a mature organization really ought to have. Next slide. So one of the things that we've talked a lot to Jacobs about, and I always get a little bit nervous about trying to describe avoided costs or, because, you know, that's a little bit nebulous in terms of predicting out into the future what kind of cost savings you would have by investing in some of the foundational activities that are important. However, they've got a number of examples, and I believe you've got a handout to look at, of projects that they've worked on by implementing a robust facilities, condition assessment and management activity over time, how important that is in terms of containing costs. And even as simple as we've been working on the update of the five-year capital plan to include all the bond program projects, we've been looking extensively at those two buckets, the principal bucket, as well as the MEP bucket, and thinking differently about how to align and sequence those projects. And they've already identified dollars that can come off the table in terms of cost estimates of how all those projects would, how much they would cost over time if we rolled them out, without really being deliberate about how they're packaged together. So we think that this will pay for itself, and we think it's important for an institution like ours, even beyond the bond program, but to figure out how we'll use cash resources for pay-as-you-go capital improvements over time, but also to maintain our facilities. We are proposing a $2 million engagement that'll actually span three years. And the intent is for us to have staff augmentation for a piece of this to help stand up the program. They'll help us go through an exercise of identifying our needs and selecting the software product that we will maintain this in over time to get ourselves off of, you know, spreadsheets that are sort of defining the different system types. And then eventually, they will be able to leave us able to staff and operate that activity going forward. We've also had the benefit of, you know, our recent hire with Okong Hemmings as the new executive director of that group. And he's got extensive experience in doing exactly this and managing costs over time by having an effective asset management program. So, again, it feels like a void, and as we've really rolled up our sleeves to work on different aspects of this, we think that this is important and foundational to be happening simultaneously with the other work that we're doing and in preparation for those master plans for the other campuses to have the results that we need them to.
Madam President.
Yes.
A question.
Yes.
I'm concerned about us, if we have staff that are working in tandem with the consultants so that we maintain that connectivity and that oversight as we progress. And that thought about this particular situation brought another question to mind is, which I understand Chancellor, it's out of our purview, but about new hires, updated staffing for the district, I think it's important. I honor consultants. When I make money, that's how I make money right now as a consultant. But employees, having employees that have a commitment and a long-term connection to the district is critical for continuous progress, not only in fiduciary responsibility, but also all the other aspects. And so I'm concerned about that. I want to express that I'm concerned about us not spending so much money on one side and not investing in new employees that are staff employees. I understand that you fully have capability of handling that, but I want to express my concern that I think is essentially important, that we be aware, that we are bringing people on staff that can help us not only do the job for the moment, but maintain the progress over a period of time. And I would, for one, would like an update on a staffing report in the near future.
Thank you. So one thing I'll add is the structure of this contract is intended to do precisely that. I mean, we've been operating sort of one way for a while, right? And so there's a lot of things that have become sort of the standard here. We've got the benefit of a firm like Jacobs to help us stand up a new program, but the intent is for them to work side by side with our existing team and then future resources as needed to make this the way we do business going forward with our own in-house team. So, again, I think that by the scale of an $825 million bond program compared to what we used to deliver on a capital program basis previously, over time is huge. And so it definitely has exposed some of the weaknesses in the systems that we have to manage that. And this is certainly emphasizing, creating a good foundation to manage that over time and take advantage of the expertise that we have partnering with us with Jacobs at this point.
Another important point.
Dr. Morrison, did you want the chancellor to address your question about the staffing?
No, I wanted to comment a formal report at a future time. I don't ever want to put him on the spot like that.
No, that's what I mean. Did you want, did you want him to acknowledge your question? I guess that's what I was asking.
If he'd like to. I always love hearing from the chancellor.
Okay. Go ahead.
Two parts to that question, one of which relate to staffing of this particular activity. But I think what we're trying to convey is that this has gone dormant internally for a long time, and we need help in order, initially, in order to ramp this up, then be able to maintain this on our own in the future. So that's staffing particularly to this agenda items. General staffing, certainly we can put something together related to employee employment in terms of what employment activities are happening and going on in folks that are being hired. We can certainly do that.
Thank you. And let me just share a little history. You know, one of the important things that Tarrant County College did over its past 56 years, we not only educated students, but we helped to build the economic base of the community by providing jobs at all skill levels within the community. And so therefore, people who had full-time employment with decent wages and benefits could buy houses, could buy cars, you know, could invest and build their economic base. And building their economic base, they built the economic base of the community. And I understand that over the past 30 years, you know, we went to more contract for cleaning and et cetera and et cetera, and all the other different areas that we go to for bid services on. And that doesn't necessarily enhance the economic base of our communities. And at some point, it's important that we look, because we have the freedom, the responsibility to do that, we look at how can we best invest our dollars so that our dollars can be reinvested into our entity? And when we best invest our dollars in the people who fund us, that's how we can best invest in the future of our entity. I just want us to think about that. Whereas at the moment, the cheapest price might be purveyed to be hiring an outside contractor on a limited basis, that may not be the best long-term investment for our community and for our economic base. And so that's a part of biting the bullet, making the decision. And that's probably why they have seven people who are elected and who can be unelected on the board, because we want to be held accountable to the people. And so it's important that we recognize, we're just not getting the best bang for our buck today. We are here to invest in the community. And there are many ways we do that. And I want us to not forget that and to be very mindful of that with every dollar that we spend. The other thing I wanted to make point of, and I mentioned this before, I would like to encourage everybody who's contracting as a part of this 837 million to get involved in capacity building. I think we were told last meeting that Jacobs has brought on one intern to work on this project. That's not enough, in my opinion. And all these other people who are getting all these multi-billion dollar contracts, I'm challenging them to do the same. And Chancellor, I'm suggesting that within your staff, you look at bringing some people on to shadow some of your people who, in this very specialized work, because the work has to continue, whether you decide to take a change of direction, Ms. Allenese, Dr. Block, all these other leaders that you have at the table today, what happens if they make a life-changing decision? Where would we be? And we have to ensure that the future of TCC is bright and that we have people to step in and keep going forward toward our three goals and eight principles. So, thank you, and please accept that challenge.
Thank you for your comments, Dr. Morrison. Any further discussion on this?
I do have a question for clarification purposes, Susan. So we, this is going to be separate from an ERP system? Is this, or is this going to be a module within an ERP? Because we talked about, you know, this future, why we're going to make some sort of acquisition for an ERP system. So is this going to be separate from that? Or would we be able to, that be a part of a module within the ERP system that we're investing in at some point?
So I anticipate that it will likely be a separate product from the ERP. However, for financial reporting of the value of our assets, there would be some integrations there. But this truly is about having an inventory of every component of all of our buildings and a scheduling tool about replacement and repair of those over time and being able to grade the condition. And so part of what the exercise that they will go through with us in assessing what our needs are, is helping us identify what products are out there to do that. And we will be coming back to you soon with a recommendation on ERP. And with full knowledge, we'll be able to understand how those work together or not. So.
So this would be something separate that would integrate with?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So is it, I mean, have we even just contemplated just using that one? Because in other words, we're going to have two separate systems again.
It is. And I will tell you that most, what people call ERPs generally don't cover every one of their needs. There are still going to be add-ins, not to the degree that we have currently because of all of the gaps of our current system. But there are always integrations to other specialized systems for different purposes. And in my experience, you know, even at the city, our complete asset management activities for the maintenance and care of them was separate from the ERP people soft that we had that would manage them as a financial asset. And so that's not unusual. But certainly we'll have that discussion as we talk about the different products that are available out there.
Is this $2 million a part of bond project, or where is the money coming from?
It is not. What we outlined in the memo is that we would use for the current year expected cost to be from our operating budget. This is not a capital improvement. This is obviously us getting our operational systems in place, and then we will plan for it in the '22 and '23 budgets that we bring to you for those future costs. And then we will plan for it in the 22 and 23 budgets that we bring to you for, for those future costs. Um, recall that, uh, currently the, uh, the current year budget includes $27 million for real estate facilities that gets transferred for capital improvements. As, as we put the budget together, we'll make a decision about whether a portion of that ought to be used for this or there are other resources within Fund 10 for us to use for that, for example. But it is not part of the bond program because this is more foundational than the bond program delivery.
So. We're going to pay him $2 million, $2, $2 million? Talk about the budget again.
So, so it, it really needs, it's an operating expense. It is not a capital expense, nor is it associated with the bond program. It really is an operating expense. So we will, we will charge it to Fund 10. We've got sufficient contingency in the current year's budget to absorb the costs that will happen this fiscal year.
That's the answer to my question.
Okay. And then we'll plan for it in 22 and 23. Yes. So that no new appropriation is needed to cover that cost right now.
Please elaborate. What, what, what is the timeliness of this? That, that you're envisioning this needs to be implemented?
Yeah. So, uh, this, this is fairly time-sensitive, again, because it's, it's foundational to those master planning efforts. So we want to make sure that as we make progress in the bond program, that we're, we're spending the money as judiciously as we can. And so that's why we brought it before you now to go ahead and get started on it immediately. What they will do, um, first is the, the facility condition assessment and get that updated. Um, and then, and then we will be working on what tool do we want to load all of that data and information into and use on, on a go-forward basis? They'll immediately provide us some staff augmentation to work exclusively on doing all of that work. But it's a three-year engagement that, that we would envision, because it'll, it'll take some time. And again, having that long view about what, what we want to put in place to be able to manage this effectively over time.
Getting into the weeds just a little bit. Okay, it's coming from Fund 10. We're spending $2 million here. Obviously, you've made an analysis of what is necessary to be used in Fund 10 or something else? Is this been thought of, thought through? How you want to use Fund 10? Maybe, I'm not exactly familiar with all the.
So this, this particular expenditure would be handled through the contingency of Fund 10 in this operating budget of the, you know, 2021 budget?
Yes. We are estimating in the current year, it's about half a million. Next year it'll be a million. The following year it'll be half a million as we start to wean ourselves off of that support.
Thank you.
I do have another question. And I'm, I'm, again, I'm just thinking about the ERP system that this will have to integrate with at some point. So whatever we decide relative to this particular system, do we have something in mind that we already kind of know that we would want to make? I just don't want us to have to go through and, and pick an ERP system based on, on this.
Oh.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. And, and, and that, that won't happen. I mean, and truly the ERP is, is focused mostly on maintaining information for the financial reporting of your, um, of your assets, right? In construction and progress and so on. This is more of an active tool about planning what improvements you're going to do over time and, and making sure that you've got a complete inventory of everything that you own and how all of that fits together. And so, um, again, there may end up being some integration in terms of, of conveying some of that financial information, but that's a decision that can be made later. And, and we would never choose the ERP based on, on this particular thing, but we will think through how those systems might interact.
Okay.
Please remind, please remind me what ERP means?
It means enter, enterprise resource planning. And it is currently colleague, but it will replace, uh, you know, we're going through the, the selection process now. And it will replace, um, human capital management, which is all of our HR functionality, um, the financial system, as well as all the student data and records and interaction with students and how they register and all of that. So, um, it, it covers a, a broad portion of our data and operations.
The reason I was asking is because there's both, there's various modules within the ERP systems. And that's why I was asking.
It's, it's right, it's a local choice.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay. We're going to take just a, what, 10 minutes? A 10-minute via break, if you don't mind, and then we'll come back and continue. Thank you. Dr. Morrison, Ms. Wood, we're going to take just a 10-minute break. So we'll be back about 4:40-ish.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes. Happy birthday to Mr. Reginald. Everybody knows now.
Are you 22?
Okay. We'll go back and, uh, pick up, uh, where were we Chancellor?
Seven.
Seven. Okay. I think it's, uh, I think you're on.
Sure. So, um.
Board of the Chancellor.
Sure. 7A, um, want to draw your attention again to your packet related to the board capital and technology, um, uh, uh, and the history of projects that we have coming up. Again, this is, uh, a very broad summary. The detail of all of this continues to be in the bond website. And you'll be able to find all of this, the past, the current, and what's coming up on the future. So this is a little bit, uh, this is more of a summary, some, uh, snapshot of that. More detail again is on the website. So I'd encourage you to visit that, should you like. There's also in here the board chronology. And I'm only mentioning that because that's beginning, or the bond chronology, I'm so sorry, not the board chronology. I don't know what that is. A bond chronology, I mentioned that because now it's beginning to grow. And we're up to about $30 million so far in spend. So we're showing you this various different ways, in a summary way of, of these actual projects in the bond, um, website where everything and anything is there. And then in a chronology that you could flow since the beginning of the bond program. Um, and so draw reference to those if you like. Um, so with that, we'll move to B, where we have a district, uh, briefing on the district investment policy. And we have our, our, our folks from PFM and Susan to introduce that.
For the benefit of the new board members, uh, probably a year ago or so, um, the board undertook an effort to, uh, review and update the mineral investment policy um, that we had, which are the funds that we generate from our mineral, mineral assets and that the foundation, uh, the TCC Foundation actually manages on our, on our behalf. And a couple of things that we did there were to modernize that policy and then to work with the foundation to ensure that their actual practices were aligned with the requirements of that policy. And we had a lot of discussion about, um, the Public Funds Investment Act and the restrictions that it places on us as a public entity to protect, um, and, uh, the, the asset, um, but also some of the relief that we have, um, for mineral assets under state statute for them to be able to, um, to manage that a little bit differently. So that policy was updated and adopted about a year ago. At that time, we advised, um, particularly since we, um, do have a, a significant amount of cash to invest, particularly, um, as we issue debt and before we spend, um, our bond proceeds that we receive and so on. And so we wanted to spend some time taking a look at the district's mineral, excuse me, the district's investment policy for the cash that we hold. And so we engaged PFM in that process for us to review it and update it and provide us some advice on how we can increase the revenue generated from those investments while also continuing to adhere to the protection that is required under the Public Funds Investment Act. And so I've got several people on the phone. We're not asking you to adopt anything this month. What we wanted to do was to provide you an overview of the changes that are recommended and the purpose of those changes and how the bond proceeds will be incorporated into that thought process. And then in August, when you return, like you do every year, we'll ask you to adopt the policy as well as our ongoing engagement with PFM to manage those assets. So no decisions today. It's an opportunity for you to hear about their work and our recommendations, ask your questions, and then we've got the next sixty days to make sure that everybody's concerns are addressed and resolved. But with that, I'll turn it over to, we have Mallory Sampson, who you've met before, Floyd Simpson, who you've met before, and Nelson Bush, who I don't believe you have met before, who were the PFM consultants who helped us with this effort. But with that, I hope they are on the line.
Hey Susan, can you guys hear and see us okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay, good. And tell me if you guys need me to zoom in on our screen. I am not great with Zoom, so my apologies in advance. But it's good to see some familiar names, some familiar faces. Like Susan said, you should hopefully are familiar with Floyd and I, and Nelson is joining us as a new face. We are thrilled that he is here. He's essentially spent his entire career helping public entities manage their operating reserves according to state code, so he's a great resource for us. You guys are incredibly busy today. Thank you for letting us join you. And so we're going to be very brief, but we'll be thorough and there'll be some time for questions at the end, which we welcome. Essentially, we'll touch on a little bit about where you guys are today and then touch on some of the thematic changes that we've seen in the investment policy statement for the district that we think that you guys should consider revising and what our recommendations are for that. So to begin, overall, as of December, you guys have roughly seven hundred and eleven million dollars in assets under management. Three hundred million of that roughly is from the bond proceeds, which will be spent down. We've talked a lot about that today. But you'll continue issuing bonds over the next several years, so that balance is going to change. As the Board of Trustees, you guys are setting the long-term direction of the district and then it's up to staff to implement those long-term objectives and goals. And they're doing so using PFIA, Public Funds Investment Act, which is the regulatory governing code for this type of asset, and they're using the investment policy statement as the blueprint. So as Susan said, you guys brought us on and we are not in-house. We certainly feel like we're in-house. We've been working with the district in some capacity since 2013, either PFM Asset Management or our Financial Advisory Group, so we are attached to you guys. But essentially, our job is to make sure that the investment policy statement is reflective of those long-term goals, is in compliance with governing code, and is also practical in allowing the district staff to manage these assets on a day-to-day basis to the best of their ability. And in saying that, there were, like I said, there's three major takeaways that we've found that we'd like to bring to the board's attention. The first has to do with the overall structure of the assets. Nelson's going to talk a bit about this, but overall, we think that you guys can be a bit more strategic and define the goals within that large pot of money that you guys are managing. You guys budget conservatively, it's continuing to grow and it will continue to grow, so we think it's time to be a bit more strategic. Secondly, PFIA outlines certain assets that you guys are allowed to invest in, and your investment policy statement also outlines certain asset classes that you are allowed to invest in. We think that there are some gaps there. We think there are some security types which are missing, and we think that there are some security types which don't necessarily need to be there. So we'd like to have a conversation with you guys about diversifying those allowable investments. And then lastly, the risk, the stated risk in the investment policy, we don't feel that it currently matches what the long-term risk levels are of these assets. And so we'd like to have a conversation regarding that. I'm going to let Nelson talk about the structure of the portfolio, and hopefully you notice we're trying to move quickly to be respectful of your time. But Nelson, if you can hear me, take it away.
Thanks, Mallory. Good afternoon and thanks for the opportunity to talk to you today. The current investment program is surely active. Staff is very active in looking for opportunities to enhance rates of return. And so we found some suggestions that we thought could give greater opportunities. But before you can really implement those suggestions, we had several conversations with them about just the overall account structure. And we recommended an account structure, a way of allocating assets between buckets that would both help staff better comply with any IRS reporting that may be required related to your tax-exempt bond proceeds. That's the world of arbitrage rebate. And then also adopt best practices that we see from organizations like GFOA, the CUBO, National Association of Colleges and University Business Officers, and other organizations like that. And so our first recommendation was that you consider commingling your assets in a couple of different ways. One, instead of investing assets fund by fund, using a short-term investment portfolio approach that seeks to align investment options with cash flow needs. This is a liability-driven strategy. You know you have payroll every other Friday. You know you have accounts payable runs that come out from time to time. Invest those dollars according to a cash flow schedule. But then for the portion of the balance that is going to be around longer term, it's going to be around longer term either to help maintain a credit rating, or it's going to be around longer term because you have an undesignated, unreserved fund balance, or because you're growing, or just because you have mismatches between the timing of revenue collection and expenditures. You identify a portion of the portfolio that we call a core portfolio, or a stable portion of the portfolio, and consider using different types of investment securities and consider different kinds of investment diversification, and consider longer-term investment strategies with that pot of money. Floyd's going to talk about what we mean by longer term. Mallory's also going to talk about the additional securities. But the first step in the process is really to think about the account structure that would best serve, and then align risk mitigation strategies into those account structures. Just real quickly on the next slide, this was a very simple analysis of the cash that the college district has had in recent times. And you can see that what this suggests is that there's about a hundred million dollars in the investment portfolio that we think can be invested in a longer-term investment strategy, because that cash is likely to be around, is likely to not be spent immediately, and therefore can take advantage of higher rates of return that are typically available in longer-term strategies. And with that, I believe Mallory is going to talk about allowable investments and expansion of investment authority.
Thank you, Nelson. So as you see here, we've got some columns with figures here. In the investment policy statement, there's a list of types of investments that you are allowed to invest in, that staff is allowed to invest these proceeds in. And then on PFIA, Public Funds Investment Act, there's a list of allowable securities. And those lists of allowable securities don't exactly match. And so if you look through the middle column, that's where you guys currently are. And then on the right are the PFM recommendations. As you'll see, some of these figures were suggesting you're adding a bit to, getting closer to PFM, to PFIA allocations, and some we're pulling back from. We're also recommending that you add a few different security types, which are all allowable under PFIA. For example, negotiable certificates of deposit. At the bottom, you'll see PFIA says you guys can put the entire portfolio into that type of security. Do we think that's prudent? No. But your current investment policy statement says you can't have any of them. We think that while you don't need to put the entire portfolio into negotiable CDs, we think that you should be allowed to use them if staff deems that appropriate for that investment type. So you'll see we've increased some of the asset allocations and then dropped them as well. Also, what's important on this page is some types of securities are more appropriate for shorter-term investments, so the liquidity bucket that Nelson is talking about. And then some security types are more appropriate for intermediate or longer-term investment horizons, and then, which Nelson also talked about, as the core portfolio. So we'd like to break that up. And as you see on the intermediate term side, there's a similar thing. We've got the PFI maximum allocation. PFIA is pretty flexible in terms of what you can invest in, and the current investment policy statement is slightly more restrictive. We're not only adding security types here, though. If you look at the third from the bottom, there are certain security types which we think that aren't necessary to be included in the investment policy statement. For example, the cash management fixed income funds, the 501-F funds. PFIA says you can have a hundred percent. Your portfolio, your investment policy statement says twenty percent. We don't actually think that, we don't, those aren't actually available to be invested in. And so we don't think that it's prudent to have something in the investment policy statement that's listed as allowable, which in practicality, it's not even an option. Now, why is all of this important? It's important, and I think we all know how crucial it is to have a fully diversified portfolio. We are in an interest rate environment right now where returns are incredibly low, and these are very conservative asset classes. We are not talking about stocks. We're not talking about cryptocurrency. We're not even talking about intermediate-term bonds. These are highly conservative investments. However, it does make a difference over the long run, and diversification is still very important. Here are some risk and return figures, and I'm going to try to be quick and break down some of these numbers. Essentially, if you compare the one- to-three-year treasury, that's more closely to what you guys are invested in now. Over the last ten years, if you had a hundred million dollars, you guys would have, you guys here, the portfolio would have grown to a hundred and thirteen million dollars. So you would have made thirteen million dollars. The corresponding risk that you would have taken is over forty quarters. Eight of those quarters would have had a negative return, so the value of that portfolio with those securities would have dropped. And on average, they would have dropped by about twenty basis points, so that's point two zero percent. On a hundred-million-dollar portfolio, that's two hundred thousand dollars. So that's incredibly conservative. Now, if we added a different security type, if we go to one that's a bit more, that has returned better historically, the one- to-three-year corporate on the bottom, if the whole portfolio was invested in that security type for the last ten years, it would have made a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. So that's fourteen million dollars more. What is the added risk that you would have gotten, that you would have undertaken by taking that? And that is the same eight quarters with a negative return, but the downside would have been point four one percent, so four hundred and ten thousand dollars. So you're trading a drop of four hundred and ten thousand dollars for an extra thirteen million dollars over ten years. Are we saying you should put the entire portfolio in one- to-three-year corporates? Absolutely not. What we're saying is that it's really important to have a diversified portfolio because all different asset class perform differently. And even though we're looking at really small differences in performance figures, over the long run, there is a cumulative difference there. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Floyd to talk a little bit more about the risk in the investment policy statement and how we think it can be a bit more aligned.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Mallory. Really quickly going through this, so duration, what does that mean? Duration is a measure of how long it takes to repay a bond based off of its principal and its interest rate, along with the rate of return. It is a measure, and one thing to notice is that duration is a measure sensitivity. So, you know, looking at this chart that we have over to at the top, you'll notice that, you know, in the quotations, you know, you have duration, and it ranges from point two-three all the way up to two-point-six, seven years. As that does increase, you know, you will actually have the risk-to-return ratio. You start to see that as it increases, you're able to make more money as you see by the cumulative value. One thing within there, though, is that as it also increases, you know, you also have, you know, the number of negative quarters, the negative returns increases too. So you'll notice that it goes from, for just a three-month treasury bill, zero, to a one-to-five-year treasury goes to ten. So this brings us into, when we extend duration, what does it do? So, you know, the one thing I mentioned is that duration impacts price and the sensitivity of bonds. So as duration increases, the sensitivity of the bond increases based off of changes in interest rates. So what you'll notice, so if you're looking, by looking at this graph at the top, you'll notice that, you know, the beige line, beige slash grayish line, which is the three-month treasury bill, and that blue line, which is the zero-to-one, one-year treasury, you know, it doesn't really move that much. But what you'll notice is that the one-to-three treasury and the one-to-five treasury move a little bit more. But, you know, what happens? If it moves a little bit more, what do you end up doing? You end up actually getting a better return. So if you notice, the average return for that three-month treasury bill is point six-three percent, while the average return for the one-to-five-year treasury is one-point-seven-five percent. And, you know, over this time period, what should you be thinking about? Through increasing duration and diversification, terrain can actually increase earnings and cash flow flexibility. So you'll notice, when you're looking down this chart, if you're looking at the S and P government investment pool, past twelve months, point one-five. Past five years, one-point-three-four. Past ten years, point six-nine percent. But if you go over to the right, you know, you'll notice, okay, well, you know, you have the one-to-three-year government index, which point two-six for the past twelve months, but for the past ten years, one-point-three-five. The difference is what truly matters when you're increasing that, you know, increasing duration, going up, going up. So you'll notice that, you know, what does that mean for you? Thinking about the portfolio over that ten-year time period would have been a difference of a hundred and eight thousand that could have been earned versus seven-point-two million. With that, I'll pass it back to Mallory.
So that was very quick for everyone, I know, but hopefully the thematic changes were clear. In general, we think restructuring how the portfolio is allocated, short-term, immediate needs, and then assets that are longer-term, then increasing the assets that are allowable in terms of the types of securities. And then lastly, is adjusting the allowed risk and the allowed volatility that the portfolio is allowed to make. And this is important because currently, the entire portfolio is essentially being mandated that it needs to be, it needs to be used right now, which is not accurate based off our analysis. What thoughts and questions does everyone have regarding about some of those suggestions?
Internally, is this what, what the goal here is, is to give the staff more flexibility in making the investments, making it, you know, the restrictions are less, which is good.
Yeah, so I guess.
What gives you more flexibility in making what investments we're going to be making based on their advice, right?
So it does. I guess the key takeaways that I would offer is that we were treating liquidity as our only goal, essentially by having a maturity, weighted average maturity restriction of one year, and taking advantage of the fact that we are in a cash position to be able to invest over a longer period of time is advised. That combined with expanding the. That combined with expanding the, and more clearly defining the instruments that will be invested in, have the opportunity to earn more. The one thing I will point out, and they said it subtly, it, we, we just as an organization need to be more tolerant of volatility with that. And so, same reason I tell my husband not to open statements when the market is really down, when we're thinking about our retirement money, right? I mean, it's the same concept, that we know that we've got some core funds that are, that are available for investment, and we don't need today for liquidity, and that we ought to be planning them, because there's equal risk in leaving money on the table that we, that we could have earned as a fiscal steward. So that's probably the big takeaway.
Is this what they're suggesting only for the bond proceeds?
No, so-
This is the whole thing?
It's the three buckets. So recall that we've got our money for cash flow, our core investment, which is not bond proceeds, but it's our fund balance that isn't needed for ongoing daily liquidity. And then we've got the bond program, and Mallory may want to comment on this, that we would be managing separately to make sure that we can deal with arbitrage and, and the timing of the cash flow, when we would need those funds specifically based on our capital program. But Mallory, is there anything that you would want to add to that?
Susan, I'll just kind of reiterate the importance of keeping those bond proceeds separate for a variety of reasons. Right now, all of the assets, like Susan said, have been managed altogether, and you guys are at the size that it's time to be a bit more strategic. And there are real benefits to being more strategic.
And in terms of staff flexibility, the one thing I'll mention is that one of our recommendations when we come back in August is to gauge, engage PFM to do this investment management for us. We do not have the in-house expertise, and I'm including myself in that. And for a, for a limited fee that will be more than compensated for by us managing all of these funds more effectively, we think that that is the right thing to do over time with a, with a program of this scale.
Conrad Heed would be very happy-
Yes, he would.
Yes, today.
I hope he's watching too.
I hope he's watching. I will, I will call it. But is, are oil and gas, is that part of this?
No.
I'm getting my brain is going.
No, remember that they've got exclusions from the Public Funds Investment Act, and all of those are held by the, the foundation, right?
Oh, that's right.
Yes, and PFM helped us, PFM helped us develop our policy that guides their restrictions originally, and so they're actually more expansive than what's allowed here as well.
Okay, good. I forgot that.
And can I add one other thing in terms of next step? So we included a draft of the policy itself. It is not a red line to the old policy because there was so much changing in language that that became an impossible and unreadable document. But what we did do is highlight a couple of sections that we wanted to make sure that you understood. For example, the philosophy, even though moved from another location, is consistent with the philosophy I think that the board has had over time. But we've also highlighted two sections that I think are the most substantive in terms of the changes that we're recommending and how we operate this. And so we've highlighted the investment parameters that Mallory has outlined, and then we've also highlighted the table about how we would distribute among the different types of investments as a recommended portfolio for you to look at. But if you have any comments when you read through it, or questions, and certainly staff is available between now and August, we would ask you to act on this.
Any other comments, discussion? Ms. Alanese, well, actually, this might be Mallory. You mentioned, and one of the observations was around the district growing and their assets, I think you, yeah, the assets were co-mingled. So when you talk about the district is growing, are there certain triggers that, that we need to be looking at internally to say, hey, you know, the district is growing, what is that? What does that mean, per se? And, you know, to bring us back to table, to kind of look at this and reevaluate it. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'll start, and then we're going to let Nelson swoop in because this is his expertise. I can see him laughing at me, all the way from Virginia. So essentially, all of your assets, and to put it in my own terms, it's like you guys have it all in your checking account. And you guys have been budgeting very conservatively, and those assets are just continuing to grow and grow. And it's at the point where we need to move some money into the savings account and maybe even an investment account. But Nelson, can you talk a little bit about those, when that time comes?
I, I actually think Mallory did, did a good job of, of describing it. The reality of the situation is, is your, your college is, is growing. You're doing awesome things in the community that you're serving, and in part, because your community is growing, and in part, because of the way you're serving them. You continue to grow, you continue to have lots of plans, your, your investable assets have surely grown. And, and the opportunity cost of, of not taking advantage of, of, you know, things that are available to you, things that are available through what is from the state a very restrictive set of, of investment codes, opportunities even within their restrictions are, are very significant. I think you're, you're at the point now where, where you're effectively a large governmental investor. You, you moved out of the, the medium size, even in Texas, about $100 million ago. And, and I think this will help your investment program take advantage of opportunities that are out there, and, and just be a little more thoughtful and in line with, with your organization's overall goals and objectives.
And I'll add one thing to that as well. So when you think about where we've been, we hadn't issued debt in 25 years. Now, suddenly, we, you know, received $300 million with that last sale, right? And so we need to have a more sophisticated plan around that. Separately from that, we have been budgeting very conservatively with the purpose of being prepared to sell tranches of debt and shift money from the tax rate over to the debt service without raising our overall tax rate, right? That was our commitment. And so in preparation for that, we did do some conservative budgeting that has allowed our fund balance to grow over time. We do know we've got some big projects coming up, ERP being one of them, that, that we expect that the board will make some decisions about using some available fund balance for purposes like that, right? However, one of the things that we did in preparation for that last sale is the board adopted a fund balance policy as well, to think about how much, and we adopted it at a 50% level. We actually exceed that right now in terms of our fund balance that's available. That's, that's a conservative stance, but that helps us start to think about how we align our long-term investment policy when, when we're planning on having that kind of cash on hand as well. So it's all of those sort of changing circumstances that have led us to this point as, as we deliver a bond program as well that's contributed.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, discussion?
Is PFM the rebate analyst for arbitrage purposes, or does that even apply to our budget?
You know, that's a good question. Are you guys the rebate analyst in this scenario, or is that, we've got our ongoing-
Do, do you want us to be?
No.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what the proposal, but we, we'll have that conversation, and I'll be able to answer that more effectively next time. We haven't had that problem until now, so. And actually, we probably still won't have that problem based on what we're earning right now, but it will, it could be an issue going forward, so, yeah.
For, we have some new trustees, so I'm wondering if, to just kind of familiarize them with this, if you have any suggestions how we could do that. Susan, with what this is, the policies, and, you know, what, what our limitations are, and just kind of talk a little bit about this. So you could be thinking about that, how we can just kind of update them on, sort of going forward, they'll be more familiar with it.
Sure. So, so you've got the draft policy, but what we could also do is dust off the slides that I think we reviewed with this group previously about the Public Funds Investment Act, so you can, you may already be familiar with that based on your prior rules, but, but we can distribute that as well. And if they need to sit down to talk through it, I'd be happy to be available for that.
Is there a requirement under state law? What's the video?
There is. They'll be getting the training on Public Funds Investment Act as well. Yeah, okay.
So that'll be, that'll be perfect, I think.
Okay. And that'll happen before August? Yeah, okay. Oh, perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for joining us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a pleasure. Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to move on to the next briefing, and that is on the 2122 budget. Those slides can come up. And so the agenda for this includes about five different items here. If we could go to the, keep going with the slides. First of all, an overview and recap of where we've been this past year, and then to talk a little bit about the revenue components that we always, that we rely upon, what some of the revenue, those revenue scenarios may be for this coming year, as well as considerations for budget related to those revenue scenarios, and then finally, then some next steps. So if we begin, I want to take you through a couple, a little bit of history here, and first, of this past year related to three resolutions, and again, specific resolutions that you would engage in each year, but for the point of memory of, of our past board members, but also our new board members, what a resolution looks like as it relates to the tax levy resolution. So there are a number of items in the August board meeting that speak to budget, and these are, these are examples of those. This would be this past year, and specific to this past year with a tax levy resolution is that we held the rate at, at 13027, and that did not exceed, again, the April 2000, or the 2019 rate. The nomenclature changed a little bit, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. So we made a commitment not to increase our rate, and we hadn't done so, but some nomenclature changed as it relates to what the effective tax rate would be, which is no longer used to the new tax rate, if you will. And I'll talk a little bit about how that broke down in a bit. But so what we've done in 20 then is broken out the, the debt service, if you will, the first year of that. So we dedicated part of that existing tax rate, if you will, that we've adopted to maintenance, the maintenance and operations, and taken a piece of that for the sinking fund for the, for the debt service. And so we carved, if you will, the debt service out of our existing rate. The second resolutions you have is much more detailed as it relates to the operating budget. And I'll speak a little bit about, about that. We, we talk about the, the maintenance and operation fund, our Fund 10, and what the primary revenue sources are for that. And for this past year was over $371 million. Also, within that budget resolution, we speak to specifically to an auxiliary fund, Fund 20, which, again, you've heard a little bit about that tonight, that the revenues from that come from our bookstores and vending equipment, or vending services. And the expenditures for that do go through things like the pilot program, the bus program, eliminating barriers. Those are non-tax, these are non-tax dollars, if you will, and so we have flexibility in which to, to use that. And again, the expenditures last year were a little over, close to $7 million. The capital fund, Fund 40, was one in which we would transfer funds from Fund 10 specifically for, from the maintenance and operations fund specifically for capital expenditures. And this past year, that was $50 million, primarily because of the move from the MOC down here was the big ticket item there. The, the debt service fund, Fund 50, that's the new fund this year, and we carved that out, as I mentioned, from the existing tax rate, and that was around $17 million, and will be $17 million for the next 20 years for the debt service that we have. And then the, the bond capital fund itself, so establishing a Fund 90, which actually speaks to the bond funds that will be expended each year. And then you also act on tuition each year, and that's also a part of the budget resolution. And then there's some, some verbiage around contracts and setting salaries and such that also included in that budget resolution. The next resolution I want to share with you, and this is what you typically have as well, the budget would include, as part of a resolution would incorporate salary increases. This past year, we did not do a salary increase until mid-year. It was not retroactive. So in fact, that the employees did receive a salary increase mid-year, annualized it to 3%, but it was not obviously 3% for the year because we did not retroactive that. And so that's a little bit of a recap and overview of where we've been this past year and what these resolutions typically look like each August. There are some other things you act upon related to exemptions and homestead and things like that that I didn't include here. Those are statutory in some way for you to act upon. What I'd like to talk about next, then, are the actual revenue components that the college relies on each year, and some of these are related. State funding is somewhat made up of, of enrollment, but some other things. Property taxes, we just talked about, and then tuition in nature. So where's the history been on those? And I think it's important to take a look at the trends, because these trends are going to continue. And not only will this college have to address this, but the state of Texas will have to address this as a, as a, you know, community college sector. As I digress for a second, I'm on a commission now to look at the finance of this sector on into the future and how to make it viable. So if you look at the pie, if you will, you can see some trends in the pie, and the two significant ones is the state continues to, to reduce its overall percentage appropriations related to our budget. This is happening throughout the country. I came from a state where at one time, 78% of the budget came from the state of Arizona, and I left, 0% came from the state of Arizona. This state is tracking in the same way. It may take a little longer to get there, but it's tracking in the same pattern. And so that's something to be aware of. The other thing is that we have held tuition relatively affordable, and I'll show that in a second. So the percent of our tuition as it relates to total budget has decreased as well. Obviously, due to the growth in residence, growth in commercial, the growth in value of property, our property taxes have, have been very, very healthy. So you can see as percentage of budget, how that has increased over the last 10 years. And so these are, that is the overall trend, if you will, and I think it's important that we see that, so that not only for now, but we know kind of perhaps where we're going in some of the decisions that we need to make down into the future. So let's specifically look at state revenue and what that looks like. The Bionium budget was passed. For each of the next two years, Tarrant County College will receive $58.9 million from the state of Texas. So that's locked solid, if you will, without any other, you know, major catastrophes where the state has to, has to revert back. That's made up of core, of three components, and they're not equal in nature. A core operations, we receive point, about $700,000 for. Every single community college in the state of Texas receives $700,000 as core operations. So whether you're big, big like us, or small, small like some parish junior college or such, you receive $700,000 in operating, core operating dollars. We also receive a percentage, about 20% of the state allocation, you can see by less than that, in student success points. And what does that mean? There are formulas that speak to student persistence, student retention, student graduation, KPIs, if you will, around the student progress and student, student success. And thus, there's a points allocated to that, and so there's a formula to that. And so you can see our allocation, of the 58, nine, about $11 million to success points. The big piece of the state revenue really comes from contact hour funding. That is enrollment, credit hour enrollment, such that a contact hour is when a student is in a, is in a, is in a class, hour by hour by hour. Okay, so the hours are actually counted. And so this, these are, this is the formula that the whole state works with. Obviously, you know, there's factors that are somewhat out of our control related to core operations. You get what you get. Student success points is something within our control, as well as enrollment is as well. And so it lays out very similarly across the, across the state. But I will mention, though, obviously, a smaller school isn't going to have the same amount of dollars in success points, the same amount of dollars proportionally in contact hours. So as you can see, there, there's been a battle in discussion in the state related to the, the formula that's used to formula, to fund community colleges. There's a certain group of colleges out there that want to see more in core operations because that actually helps them. And it's, it's the smaller schools that tend to, to lean that way. So another snapshot then is on enrollment data, so you can see where we've been and what those contact hours have been in the millions each year. I do want to make note of the little uptick we had in 17 and 18. We did have some focus on completion through Achieving the Dream, as well as Achieving the Gene Program, but as well as specifically addressing students who were close to graduation, finding out who they were, the 45 hours and more, and moving them through graduation. And obviously, once they graduated, that population is- And obviously, once they graduated, that population has dried up a little bit. So you can see what the trend has been in the contact hour enrollment over, over recent years. Want to spend a little time on the history of the property tax rates. And so here's, you see, all the way back to '05, '06, each fiscal year, what the adopted maintenance fund was, what the adopted debt service was, if we had any, and then the adopted total rate, and put that up against the, what used to be the effective tax rate that's now called the no-new revenue. And so the definitions changed. And, and, and so in carving out our debt service, one could say, well, you actually raised the rate. But no, we didn't. We did not raise the rate. The rate is the same as it was. It's just the definitions that are reused. What I do want to point out on the right-hand column, a number of years where the college was, did not actually go to the effective tax rate, and in essence, left dollars on the table to the tune of about $104 million over, over the last 15 years or so. So the snapshot here is that we think we've been good stewards in not raising the tax rate itself. And the history of the college has been to be very conservative and very prudent. In fact, not going to the effective tax rate for, for a number of years. So that's the story with that. So the property tax considerations this year, we, we did receive a preliminary roll in May that does show growth. But there are significant gaps in that data. There's, you know, obviously, an interesting year in commercial real estate and such. There's going to be a number of protests. And where those lie end up, who knows? And then just the business personal property tax as well is something that's going to be much more volatile than it was in the past. So we don't complete know the whole. Let's just say we don't, there's not enough confidence in that May roll, if you will, to give any type of prediction. The housing market remains real strong with about a 7% increase. And, and again, commercial properties are really quite uncertain. And we certainly have areas that have been affected by COVID-19. You know what those are. And we have a lot of those as it relates to, you know, transportation and entertainment and such that have been significantly impacted. The commercial real estate piece of that has been significantly impacted, with the values being down around 2% of those. But the current certified value base that came in January shows future years will, will, you know, potentially reflecting a decline in those values as that space, you know, stays vacant, remains vacant, if you will. So there's a lot of dynamic here, both on the residential side, with prices going up and a lot being built, and then the commercial side being affected. We will have a certified roll July 25th. So that does not give us a lot of time for August board meeting. Hopefully, we're going to make a little bit of a guess here, and you'll see that in a second. But that's the time constraint that we'll be dealing with. So we're not going to really know for sure until July 24th, 25th, what those tax rolls look like. I'll next go to our last funding source stool, that's tuition. We will be holding tuition steady again for $64 a credit hour. That will be the fourth year in a row that we have done so. We will, though, need to talk in the future about the considerations of that. And I'll show you in a second why that might be. The in-district rate at $64 credit hour, that represents about 87, 88% of our student, of our credit hours usually, okay? Out-of-state is anywhere between 8% and 10% of the credit hours in any given year. And then out-of-state and then non-residential is that 1% to 2% to 3%. It can fluctuate a little bit here and there. As we brought Connect Non and Connect its authority to offer classes out-of-state, we may have more activity there, more out-of-county and more activity there. But that's kind of a snapshot of what it does. So obviously, a big bulk of it is at the $64 a rate. So let's say, how does that stack up compared to what we, what we prepare, what we compare ourselves often to new board members is what we call the Big 10, the Top 10, whatever. It's those institutions that are comparable in size and demographics and geographics to Tarrant County College. And you can see who those are. And for the most part, they, it kind of explains where they are located. As you can see, at $64 a credit hour, we're near the bottom. We're never going to get to Collin, or Collin may never get to us, although they've gone up quite a bit. Their base is very, very different. They have so much commercial over there that, you know, they were able to keep their rate quite, quite low. But I'm going to tell you, that was, that gap has closed significantly because they were at $48 an hour just two years ago. And now they're up to 57. So we're at 64, and we're low. And you can see where our peers are at that. So I mentioned that because, you know, no, we don't want to balance the budget on the backs of our students, but we also have to have a balance overall. And not for now, and not for this year, but not to distant future. We're going to have to have a discussion on that, what that balance really should look like. Our out-of-state, our out-of-district tuition, again, is, is near the bottom compared to, to the rest of our, our peers, if you will. And so we, you know, the, the consideration there is we're a border county. When I mean border county, you know, we're the, we're the, we're the urban county next to Parker, next to Johnson, next to Denton. So, you know, folks come here because they don't have the same opportunities in those, in those counties. And so we want to be, you know, want to serve them, but also want to be sensitive to the cost there as well. So that's how we look in comparison out-of-district. When we look at out-of-state, we're much more right in the middle, as you can see. And so that's, those are just as a point of reference. Let me then go to what some revenue scenarios may look like for this year. And as I had mentioned, the state appropriation is solid, and that will be a change of a little over $2 million. We are just projecting now a maintenance tax increase of roughly $6 million. We're not going to project any enrollment increase, therefore, no tuition revenue increase in terms of, of budget. And so we're going to hold that flat, being very conservative. So if you look at this scenario, that, that really presents about another $8.1 million of new money, if you will, to the college. And again, this is just a, a, a projection of what possibly could be. We know that we're not going to increase tuition. If we have the same enrollments we had last year, we're going to get the same tuition. We know the state appropriation has gone up. And right now, the, the one that's not really known is certainly the maintenance, maintenance tax. So what are we considering in this next year as it relates to budget? We want to certainly continue to look at our enrollment as it relates to contact hours and the effects that, you know, COVID-19 has had. And then just the going rate of, of college students. You know, student enrollment is down across the country. We're nowhere near down as much as many institutions in the state and the country are. The, the trend has been similar in a lot of areas. Colleges lost a lot of enrollment of students directly out of high school because they did not have the ability to facilitate out of high school into college. And frankly, a lot of women left, left college as well. And so that's very similar across the board. And we're hoping that, you know, those trends can be addressed. We'll have, can you go to the next slide? So we will want to prepare, as Susan mentioned earlier, for the next tranche of debt to support the bond program that will be coming up in the next couple of years. So that's a consideration in this budget to begin planning for that. And as well as we want to look at the compensation and ensure that we're competitive in recruiting and retaining our employees. And before it came popular, we have had a lot of discussion around our lowest wage earners and looking at those. So if we want to look at some budget considerations or objectives this coming year is to really look at our enrollment and monitor that, to really plan for the next tranche, those are of debt issuance, and really to look at our, how we, how we continue to, to compensate our employees and recruit people and retain them as well. The last item there, and this is not an operational budget item, but it was mentioned a couple of times tonight, to begin planning for the, the use of funds for the ERP. This next fiscal year, we'll definitely be coming to you with action items specific to the ERP. And we're looking 60, 80 million over 10 years. And we're not proposing to handle that through the, up the annual budget, but to look at fund balance for that. So that's not within this budget, but I think it's very important to keep on the radar screen that, that consideration that we do have. So with that, some of the next steps that we will have, we'll continue to, you know, evaluate all the revenue sources, as we mentioned. We'll get the, the tax roll on July 25th. And we will, you know, completely evaluate the, the resources that are requested throughout the college. We're continuing to do that to be able to incorporate in the, in next year's budget. That's been an ongoing activity. We will ask the board to review at the August work session, a briefing on the proposed budget, and then August 19th, an adoption of that budget and the tax rate and the other components that go into adopting the fiscal year, if you will. Or we may have to either approve that or propose a tax rate. Or we may have to require additional notice for a public hearing, depending upon what the, what that rate comes in at and what we adopt for that. So that will be the August 19th. However, in the intro, we've got a long time between now and August 12th. I'd be more than happy to sit with any board member individually, one-on-one, to talk about this specifically, or in general, the budget, and get into deeper detail, if they, if you'd like to, related to the budget constitution, how that comes together. But what I wanted to do was hit the highlights and really what you govern as it relates to, you know, the tax rate and the tuition and, and the history and that, and where we are and perhaps where we're going. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions related to budget preparation for '22.
Comments, discussion, questions?
Yes, as I've stated to the chancellor privately, that I think it would be very important, I mean, we've got two dates that are absolute, of course, but in between, I think we need to work as a team somehow to be kept up to date on this because we've got some important decisions to make, what your plans are, what you're going to, what you think you're going to recommend. We need to be kept informed and not, I think last year was a rather, it was kind of quickly done because of the condom, because of the virus thing. But I don't want to make snap decisions on, on things, particularly the economy's going up, enrollment, so forth and so on. I think it's very important that we keep informed. And if we need to have workshops to do that, I think we ought to do it. That's just my suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Greenhill. Any further comments, considerations? So Chancellor, based on that, just suggestion, is there a possibility that you could just kind of address that and about what, what might be able to do to address, you know, to make sure folks are informed?
Well, as I mentioned, I'd be more than willing to sit down one-on-one to walk through this, this, as well as anything deeper. If there's a desire for something other than that, I'd like to know what, what constitution that might be, what, what desire might be to include in an agenda like that.
I would make, Mr. President.
Yes, Dr. Morrison, I think, did you want to finish your point? Just one second.
Oh, no, I, I'd probably say the same thing as, as she is that what I don't like to see is, well, this is it, you know? And then you can, you can, you know, I, I'd like to make an informed decision like, like Kenneth, you know, Kenneth Barr has always been saying that sometimes we get the numbers and it's, you know, a month before or two, three weeks before. And making a snap decision is not, and I, I think in our best interest. I'm not, I may, I may be alone on that one. What do you think?
Thank you for your comment. Let me, Dr. Morrison, her comment, and then anyone else. Go ahead, Dr. Morrison.
I was going to suggest that I would make myself available for a general, a meeting with the board and the chancellor prior to our August work session. I happen to think it's very valuable, not only when I ask my own questions, but I listen to the questions that other board members have and the answers that are given. And so I understand that it's summertime, but I think it's vitally important that we are well-informed. And I would ask the staff to look at that and see if that might be the best use of, of time to have a meeting with several of us or all of us at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I would, I would just observe that we have, and I appreciate the presentation the chancellor's just made. I think it gives us a lot of information. But, but essentially, it's about the revenue side, and there's nothing about the expenditure side, the programmatic side. And to me, I, I think the board needs to understand where the changes are, what the new emphasis might be as we go from the current year into the following year. And, and a little bit more about the process that you've gone through to make those selections and recommendations. No, in other words, and this was a good explanation, excellent explanation, about the funding side of it. But my experience has been you guide an organization through the budget process. So what are the services, what are the changes in services and opportunities that we're going to create in the new year? And, and I'm available for whatever kind of workshop we need to do, as Dr. Morrison suggests.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Any further comments, questions, discussion? Okay, Chancellor, do you, it sounds that so far, the board would like to get a little bit more information. I think it is important that we get a fulsome review and report of all the activities, revenue and expenses. So we can schedule those one-on-ones, as you talked about. And then maybe we can get those schedules with enough time to allow us to still meet if we need to as a group because I think that's what the consideration sounds like. Okay? Any other comments? Okay, all right, thank you.
And Madam President, let me just say that I know I was, I heard a report today that consumer costs are climbing faster, at the fastest rate since 2008. And so any projections that we made a couple of months ago might need to be revisited in terms of salary, salary increases. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that, Dr. Morrison. Okay, so just to clarify, would you like for us to reach out to your office individually? And how would you like?
We'll, we'll reach out.
Okay, all right.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, we have an update, 7D with informational memo. Is there something on the monthly bond program report, Ms. Elenies? We're going to get you a pair of roller skates, you can just zip back and forth.
I forgot, I have one last item. So you guys hopefully are in a rhythm now of receiving every month an informational report, transmitting the written document that we prepare related to the bond program. Again, we come back at least quarterly with a, a presentation on that as well so that there's an opportunity for discussion. The one thing I will point out is that within that document, there's lots of information about sort of the, the list of projects and scheduling overtime and all of that. That is going to continue to morph as we are informed by what we talked about earlier with the asset management program, as well as the master planning of those other campuses. And so don't get too married to the way schedules look in there because we're going to be fine-tuning that as we have more information to, to make better choices about how to, how to make those improvements. But just wanted to point that out to you. But otherwise, if you have any questions about the content of that, feel free to let me know.
Okay, there's no questions, discussion on that. We have a closed session. So what do we do? Everybody has to, okay, all right, okay. So we have a few minutes. Do we have at least five minutes? We're going to take a bio break. Okay, if anybody needs to take a break prior to the closed session, we'll be back here about 5:50-ish, something like that. It's 5:44 here. Thanks. Thank you.